Yeah.
They are, yeah.
I was gonna say, how's it work?
That one stay on?
Yeah, I'll wait for it to stay on. My way ring won't stay on, I don't wear it anymore.
You can't, part of the bar, I know that.
See a scar there, a new scar back here. It's going out of the coat. The door. You didn't realize what it's like. The door. Swing around. Ring. Slide this ring back. So, I'm sitting there. When they need to land over in the corner. Stella, is that the titanium rings? Those, go bring with you that off. We want to never buy them. I'm a week, get them off. So, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, I don't believe I want one of them. It's free.
How you doing?
You all, you finish all the lines.
I've got one, they can't have had one since the.
That's what it's like.
Did that?
No. It's gold. It's silver. But it's like, my God, it says. It started with a C, but it didn't say can. I did that. Can't, oh, can't, can't.
Okay, how you doing?
I'm doing good. I'm doing good.
Hey, y'all doing?
Big crowd tonight?
Yeah. Lady here. Hi, it's Jennifer. Huh? Where is?
I ain't even there.
Wish I had that.
No, I don't. A cheeseburger. I did. Just, uh, Linda.
Like, you're making that.
It's like Robbie. He has a very bad, he doesn't think that.
What's wrong with the patch? It probably isn't.
I think there's no. All anybody just, just keep fighting.
You mean to send an email without double check?
Thank you.
Going for it.
I always wondered.
Did you want to care?
No, I don't care. No, no, no. No, no, no.
Oh, you gotta say. I saw the door. We're going back there.
They're not going to want to.
We're going to the fair hall. Oh, I'm good, John. Where, where are they?
I didn't hear my computer text. I didn't hear it go when I listened.
Let's be aggressive. First one, seven, I don't know.
Where are you doing? Yeah, how you doing?
Good evening, folks. How you doing? Come here, sport. They think.
Hello there.
Ben, Ben? Oh. Uh, we have no order to discuss which those. I'll see you later. We will then just speak this shit. Now, what's that name? I don't know. But also, first and, oh. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You want more?
No.
Harry.
Getting the lights.
How you doing? Unfortunately, that's what you see.
Well, you can show us, though. First, be careful. But you want more? More.
We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order as, uh, this is, uh, a little atypical meeting. And, uh, as, as we continue through the, uh, dilemma of our water billing problems, I feel like it's necessary that the council get together, we may have to do it every week in order to, uh, stay abreast and, uh, up to date on the status of the, uh, uh, progress or lack of progress, whatever we may have as far as getting these, uh, problems resolved. Uh, this is not actually a public hearing, but a work session for the council. If there are those who would like to comment about the problems, I'll reserve a little bit of time at the end of the meeting once, uh, we had the presentation by the staff and by, uh, the folks from our software company. Uh, I'll reserve a little bit of time for anyone who would like to make any comments at that point. We do have, uh, as I said, both staff, uh, this evening, as well as representatives of the encode, our, our software's provider. I certainly want to thank them for taking the time and traveling here to be here with us this evening. Uh, I'd like to ask at this point, if we could, Mr. Wood, uh, give us, uh, an update of, uh, from the staff personnel, what is going on, what they've been doing, and what problems feel like they've made in this, uh, work.
I've got a couple of forms I want to pass around, Mayor. Um, and I'm not necessarily, this is, you folks decide the pace of the meeting, but I'm not necessarily expecting to. I've said then at this point, the first is a, uh, is a draft policy that, that could be used or reviewed by the, uh, appropriate water and sewer committee, I believe, Mr., uh, you mentioned, please, Mr. Barry Ford, Chair of that committee. We have purposely tried to make this pretty succinct and simple. Uh, not asking you to take action on it tonight, but I reckon you're gonna review it, and at the next, uh, uh, meeting of, uh, of that committee, perhaps for that to be discussed, that that would give us a little bit clearer definition on the policy for, uh, review of a particular case. I'm gonna also pass out to you a form that we are now using, but so you'll know that we're using. And that is a, uh, a review form for each case. See the pertinent data that we're asking for on this form. If someone has a, an issue they'd like to bring to, uh, to the attention of us, of staff. Our, uh, process or procedure for this form would be that, uh, copies or, what, what we want to do is provide one uniform standardized form for everybody who is generally the direct recipient of a request for it, a review of a particular account. Obviously, primarily, that's Ms. Floyd and her staff downstairs, but, uh, also the mayor and his assistants get, uh, get some of those requests. I and my assistant get some of those requests. And rather than, uh, the mayor and me filling out some notes on the back of a business card, or them filling out something on the back of an ad machine tape, or somebody grabbing a piece of scrap paper and it gets, we, we want a standardized, uniform form that then goes to one central location, that, 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 that the basic information is the same or similar on, that is maintained in one central location, which will be, uh, Ms. Floyd's custody. And for these forms to be reviewed every day, either by Mr. Ingram or me with Ms. Floyd. But every day, we want to be able to know the status of a request for review of a particular case. This was.
Uh, this form is what I was giving the other day. This was not, this replaces it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I'm not sure about that one. What, which one? Maybe I can, but, but. The form he's holding up is that one's the, the old one?
That's our phone call log. When we had.
Oh, okay. No, that's a different form.
That's a form that is utilized so that anybody that comes down into the water department that helps on the phones, they will use this form and then convert it over to this.
Now, that might be a departmental issue, but for, for purposes of those of us who are sort of in the direct line of receipt, right, this will be the standard form.
But what was happening is phone calls come in, staff down there was taken away, answered phones, and trying to resolve problems, and they were putting it on pieces of scrap paper, and so this form is simple, and anybody who's down there working and understand this man's been down there working, taking phone calls, put this form, and you just hack off the appropriate box, and then pass it to this form so that you have the follow-up.
Correct.
That's good.
Let me, let me mention two things that you just jogged, uh, my memory about it, if I'm not. I see the mayor's thunder there, but he and I met with, uh, a person, I, I, I'm not sure, identities ought to be revealed at this point, don't make us sound mysterious about it, but someone in the community who is exceedingly well-versed in, in, in their professional history of utility billing and management. And that person is going to, uh, to come in, I think, for a short while tomorrow. They have some obligations next week, which, which require that they won't be able to spend much time with us next week, but then begin, beginning to following week, will be, uh, doing some work for us on a consulting basis. And we are encouraged, uh, based on a right, uh, right extensive conversation with more, this morning, with the, uh, systems, uh, procedures recommendation that, that we believe that person can bring, bring forward to us. Then secondly, we have an additional staff person. We have gone ahead and taken that initiative, uh, had some objections from council, to go ahead and bring in an additional staff person. And be sure y'all understand that's not currently budgetarily authorized, but we have taken that initiative, and this will be a person who comes in on a contract basis, forty hours a week, well, on a contract basis, to, uh, to help with, uh, with some of the little entry responsibilities down there. We're trying to give Ms. Floyd the opportunity to devote a little bit more focus that she has not thus far had on, on the resolution of, of problems that require some thought and some discretion. Um, and by the way, uh, Mayor, I should have mentioned this, uh, today is Ms. Floyd's birthday.
Happy birthday.
And, uh, we'd have committed to, uh, letting her slip out here at seven o'clock, uh, to go for her duty patrol to celebrate her birthday, and, uh, so if we got some interplacing that needs to occur with her, we, we might want to, might want to do that on the, on the Sunday. Would you want her, Mayor, to talk about?
I think it would probably be, probably, you could let her go ahead and do that if you don't mind.
Wonder, could you, could you explain the budget schedule and what we're up against, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am here to let you know that because of the conversion, our billing schedules got behind, and because they fell behind, it is necessary to have two billing cycles that will be billed two months of consumption on one bill.
Well, that'd be two full months or like, maybe six weeks or seven weeks.
It could be, uh, two full months, or it could be a month and a half. It depends on the last read date.
Right.
We, we knew cycle two was one of the issues. What's the other cycle now?
Cycle one.
Cycle one.
And there will be like a, a node or, or a message inside the bill that will tell people that, you know, don't pass out this yet, that's for two months, divided by two, and you kind of get about where you're on the bill.
Yes, sir. We plan on doing a mail or insert, a letter, an eight and a half file, and then put in one bill.
Okay.
And then once we do this, this should be the only time we have to do this, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be back after our normal billing, final checks.
So, Wonder, would you say that we will, that the, the last cycle to be on the normal schedule should occur about when? By the end of November or the first of December?
The bill schedule or the read schedules?
The what?
Are you referring to the billing going out?
No, I'm talking about the, the, when they get back on their normal schedule.
Their normal read schedules?
Yeah.
We should get those back on their normal read schedules in the November reads, and then they will reflect on the December bill.
Okay, so by December, they should be back on their normal routine billing cycle that we're on before we actually change software, move, move to the new software?
Yes, sir.
Ian, last year, have you any, uh, question?
Ms. Floyd, can you just for, uh, explain the bill's cycle rhythm and what's, what's at, doing the bill? Is it, are we looking at the form two, when we talk about billing cycle, when we talk about cycle one, cycle two, cycle three, and cycle four?
Mm-hmm. They have set up in the system, you would have read read dates and their own set dates that you should read the meters during that time and then bill, like, three weeks later. And we'll get back on that normal schedule. And everyone's bank drives will be back on the normal schedule. They'll be getting their normal due dates and their normal bills.
And are the cycles or the read dates on where you actually decide within the bill?
No, they're actually based on how, when your route is read, like, where your route is. And that'll be something we work on later. But you basically could be in route one and be on both sides of the city.
Like cycle three, there's gray sky, river green, promised point. Well, so it's kind of scattered around, but that's.
Which is, which is a good point, because, and I only learned this myself fairly recently. Apparently, those, those, uh, service areas, cycle areas, the districts are not logically congregated. You may, you may go gray sky, and then you may go over river green. They're not grouped in the, in the respectable quadrants of the city geographically.
There's no change there right now, there's.
No, and, 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 we, no, seriously, we said that. And that, right now, may not be the time to change it, although somebody said, maybe now is the time to change it already. But, but no, we're not trying to tackle that, but it is, it is a problem, because it creates a lot of logistical encumbrance on, on the reading staff, in particular, when you get into checking for meter leaks and, and that sort of thing.
Jack, yeah, come in.
Yes, I want to ask you, did you, I want to make sure I understood you. So, you're saying that it would be billed for two months, two cycles?
Yes, sir.
At one time?
Mm-hmm.
And we, and we have, and we missed one, then we're catching up on it here?
Yes, sir.
Um, and, so I got, I know I received one the last two months for the ones that were on, and then before there, I didn't get one?
Uh, do you know what cycle we're in?
I don't.
Free sale.
Free sale, uh, uh, on going towards the shopping center.
Free sale, I believe, is on cycle one, and you are one month still a cycle behind.
So, let me ask you then, if I could ask you a question. It's like that you had a higher than normal bill, that you thought, you know, if it was just hypothetical, and then you got one for two months. And your average homeowner is buzzing for eighty, ninety dollars, and it comes in as a hundred and sixty dollars, or two hundred dollars. How do we approach that with them? If they're going to pay it all right then, is that what we're saying?
That's something Mayor and Council have to, would have to.
I think, I think, uh.
Go ahead, sure.
I, I think what we said was that we were going to give them the maximum payment period for whatever the, the latter payment schedule was A to B, but remember, council has adopted a policy previously such that we cannot accept partial payments, so you might keep that in mind.
Yeah, but this would, you have a letter here we're going to be sending out in reference to the fact that there's no penalty for late fees or anything through this period of time, and that's going to all cycles, if you will, so that they should understand that. So, if they pay, uh, fifty bucks and then come back and pay another forty later, they are not going to be penalized. Although, in the ordinance says it will, but we've got to.
Well, I think since we're doing this one that we're catching up on, we need to waive the late charges on that one until we get that one caught up.
Yeah, we still haven't charged any penalties. Our team, they don't, they don't sell much.
Okay. Uh, just one other, now, one of the problems that seem to be coming up, and we were looking at this, is that on your billing date, mine happens to be the fifth of the month to the next fifth of the month, or the eighth, whatever. But the problem is that the bill is not cut until about fifteen days later. So, when people go out and look at their meters and they read their meters, there's been fifteen days of water usage off of that meter, so sometimes when they're looking at it and say it's not matching up, and you're saying that that was one of the things that we're trying to do is to bring that date cutting the bill on the, the date that the meter was read, isn't that?
Closer, closer to. Closer, closer to the date that the meter is read, but that's not our normal schedule.
Yeah.
Our normal schedule is.
But it's just the fact that when somebody runs out and gets their bill and runs out and looks at the meter, they aren't going to be seeing it.
The normal schedule is you go on the rear.
And I hear you just say we've, we've not charged any penalties or late fees for a period of time?
Yes, sir.
Since, since the beginning of summer ago?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh, Ian, without saying anything for Wonder?
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, thank you.
We have a couple of gentlemen that would like to come up, you will, and, and tell us what you know, and maybe some of our folks would ask some questions, uh, that, that they can, uh, we do appreciate your help, uh, we want to utilize more of your time or your company's time and effort, I know, until we get this, uh, problem resolved, whatever we need to do, and, and I think we're on the way to getting that done. Uh, I think we still have some, some obviously erroneous bills, and, and Mr. Wood was telling me about one, uh, up in, um, Fallon Canyon just a couple of days ago, I guess it was, uh, the homeowner of that there was a couple of months, and had like thirty-two hundred dollar water bill, and, uh, which there was really no history there either, but, uh, that's an awful lot of water for one or two people to, to be utilizing, you know, even if you watered the grass. But, um, anyway, uh, obviously if you make any comments you want to make, and if anyone has any questions, uh, let us ask questions.
Mayor, before I introduce myself, uh, my name is Elvin Porter, I'm vice pres, vice president of implementation with Valant Technologies, and that's what the local government division, when you talk about ENCODE, that's our software, and that's one of our suites of software that involve practicality. Also with me is Mr. Gary House, he's our principal implementation consultant, he specializes in the utilities area, and, uh, Gary's been on site here multiple times to, uh, help with the setup of your system and also recently to help with resolving some issues. I'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to be here, so, first off, previous to this meeting, you and I had a short conversation, and I have a statement I can make, but I would probably prefer, let's start taking questions.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Right, uh, let me, let me ask, um, what do you see at this point? Is there any commonality, uh, relative to some of the problems that we're having now? I mean, I know there's seemed to be some period problems, but, uh, is there likely the multiplier or anything like that, that, that can just be fairly easily corrected? I guess it could have been already been corrected, wouldn't it?
Everything we know of as far as multipliers has been corrected, there's perhaps more than easily changed, plus some will be what have you, but easily changed in mass, you know, in, in large quantities, we can help you do that, but if it's one or two, we're going to show you up today.
Right, okay, okay. Um, you know, it, it, it's kind of interesting, we, we knew that when we went to this new software, apparently they, uh, everyone, even, even if you used exactly the same amount of water as you had been before, most people's usage would have gone up, simply because we're no longer rounding or truncating back down, like if you use thirty-four hundred gallons before, you would have paid for three thousand.
Yes, sir.
And now you're going to pay for thirty-four hundred actual usage. So even with, even without the software, like, or with the new software, uh, without any additional usage, your usage would have shown more in most cases, in my opinion. Was that reasonable?
I will not claim to be an expert on what your old software did.
I, I understand, I, I understand, but let's assume that it did that.
It did round it up and rounded down, I'm not sure if it did, but if you're going to round, if you take the map, if you do the simple map, and you go from rounding to exact figures, you're going to see a difference. I was thirty-four hundred, it takes me to three thousand, then it's going to see a difference when I go to thirty-four hundred, and I, and I'm not sure what your old system did, but if I was thirty-seven hundred, it took me to four thousand, you're going to see a smaller bill. Again, I don't know what you, how you, I don't know how math worked in your old system, we're billing for exact consumption is the way I understand we're billing ours, is that correct, Gary?
That is correct, yes. And Mayor, I think it's, it's correct, the old system, the water serving conversion was rounded down, so yes, your statement is correct.
Okay, I have a question. Uh, you know, when, when we acquired this software, were we advised by how to run any sort of parallel systems before there was a major switch over?
Uh, normally, I'm going to back up in that, answer a broader question on that, okay? You know, we implement many sites, many different applications aside, we did so here as well. Normally, the only thing we will advise you to parallel processing on is, uh, simply the fact, is, is the payroll personnel fees, you know, because, you know, the importance there, because there's so many deductions, tax codes, along that line. On utilities, the process we build through is we do what we call a bill compare. That means we have, when we take a cut here, to convert over, we look at the bill, you know, what the bill calculation was for that cycle, we convert that data into our system when we do a bill compare there, and we look for differences. We look for differences, and we identify the differences, we either A, get a settlement or some, or B, dig in and do something different. We recommend that for utility purposes, uh, you do not run parallel, and, and I'm going to give you my reasoning, our reasoning why, that's it. The reasoning why is because depending on the rate tables, you get to hundreds and thousands of cents, and depending how software rounds, you're going to be off any here and there, so, and then what we'd be doing to, uh, Wonder and her staff is we'd be doubling their work, and that means every time a payment comes in, I have to enter that payment exactly in the old system and in the new system. If their tax staff is, is most water department staff is taxed, usually one of those gets forgotten, and then at the end of the day, we have a balance, so one of them, you spend more time investigating, okay, not what is the system different, but what was missed, and usually your investigation is, oh, you forgot to enter these three payments. Likewise, as you do service orders, you have to do service orders in one in both systems. If you do adjustments on accounts, you have to do adjustments in both systems, and it really gets a little, um, tricky when you're doing those adjustments because systems calculate difference. You know, we, we can look at raw data in the old system, but we don't know what code's been, what code's working behind the scenes, and so they may be doing something to the rounding or something along that line, we've never seen, so you, you do the balancing there. For example, we used to, you need to shut up to sell an American.
Oh, you go right ahead, go ahead.
We're on parallel issue occurrence in your old system, thirty-four hundred versus three thousand, nothing will ever match, and so you're going to constantly run into issues there.
Back looking, knowing what we know now or what you know now, would you still not recommend running parallel systems?
I, I believe I would still recommend not, because there's, because from our history, we did this hundreds of times a year. Our history is the, you spend more time looking at the nuances of why you don't balance, and you spend so much time doing that, people, people will gravitate to the one they're comfortable with, and then you never make that switch over. The best thing to do is make the switch over, uh, and if you have a tax staff, they're learning the new system, they're saturated, we, we, you know, they're usually saturated pretty quick with the knowledge of the new system, trying to work in the new system, and so they need to find one place to focus and apply their efforts there, else you need to help your staff to handle both.
What would, what would you say is currently our biggest problem right now? Because we also have this problem, no doubt.
Uh, wow, that's a question, Mayor.
You mean we got that many of them?
Yeah, well, no, I, I think, no, I, I mean that, I mean that, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I answer this in the best way. Uh, talking to Gary a few days ago, uh, utilities, you know, utilities department, unless they just said water department, that's what we're specifically here for, is like a rolling ball, and if you ever get behind, you can't stop and figure out why you got behind, you get because consumption is still happening, bills still need to go out, payments are still coming, coming in, is that fair? Meters still need to be cut off, we've still got to run fast, we got to faster to get caught up with that law as it continues to roll. I think if, when you ask me what your, I always say biggest problem, I'll say, I'll, I'll rephrase that, so biggest opportunity is making sure the staff, if staff has the appropriate people, or you have the appropriate staff on board to keep up with all the service orders, all the meter changes, making sure everything's updated properly, any adjustments that come in, because if I don't make an adjustment properly, if, if, if I send your bill out incorrectly, if I'm the utilities department, I send your bill out incorrectly, you come to me and say, oh, you made an adjustment, I said, okay, and if I don't get that adjustment made timely before the next bill goes out to you, it's, it's, it's not just wrong, it's wrong, you're, you're wrong. Is that fair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Porter, first of all, let me say thank you to you and your people who are coming and working, so this is only what I staff to try and resolve this problem, because they have been in, they have a lot of permissions down there, and I don't know if it's related to the conversion from our old software system to our, our new software system, but I guess my concern is, is that we seem to have been in an area where we fix one problem and would create another problem, and then something else would happen and it would create another problem. Are we at a point in time where we could be comfortable in telling our customers that we're over the hump? Have we gotten there yet, or is it the possibility that something new is going to come up again? And, and I realize that, I mean, I haven't worked for the sake of thirty-four years and we had a new system that they implemented and many glitches that we had to encounter and all of that, I, I realize machines and software and everything, we're going to have our issues and we're going to have breakdowns and, and whatever else, but, I mean, we, we keep telling our constituents that, you know, here, well, you know, we got this fixed and we're at a point where we fix and move forward, and then bam, something new hits us, are we, do you, do you feel that we're at a place where we're comfortable enough at this point to tell our customers that we think we have reached?
Or yes, it's a lie to be able to tell us a lie, or is it just a break in the tone?
Okay, you tell me, is it?
You know, Gary and I, Gary and I discussed this a lot over the past three days, and tell me, I don't want to speak for it, but close. I think the majority, I mean, I think you're close, and, and I'm going to caveat a little bit, is you have to tell us if we're close. Uh, I can tell you if, if the system's processing the way it should be, I can tell you that, but I can't tell you, um, if the data's correct. I mean, and, and let me see if I can approach that in a different way. I can tell you if the system's processing the bill, the, let me back up again. All the calculation of the bill is, is a large algebraic equation, okay? I can tell you the equation's right. Are we feeding it the variables? That, I don't know, and that's what we lean on you. Are we feeding it the right variables? Do we have the right read dates? Do we have the right service order, you know, the service from the true dates? Do we have that? If that's correct, we're good, and we have the right meter scales, we're good. Do we have, you know, do we have the meters locked in? Yes, we're good.
Now, we have, we have the, the read dates, that's something on the bill, that's actually what we've got, is, uh, service dates that, say, August the nineteenth to September the nineteenth, but in reality, that, that doesn't redeem anything at this point, because neither one of those days are read dates.
That's your, that's your service date, your service from the, yes, sir.
But, so, so, but to me, service dates means the time it was read last time versus the time it's read this time. Is that, is, is that not, is that not what that means?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, thought I'm, since I'm asked involved with, uh, your staff here, I thought maybe it'd be a better segue to me, rather than Elvin doing it, I just tried to include along the information. Uh, first of all, to answer, uh, ask question, I think we're very close to getting over the hump. I think we do have a true light at the end of the sun, and the reason I say that is because of actually working on site with your staff, uh, one week actually being here on site, uh, the next two weeks, uh, this being one of them, uh, working remotely with your staff, uh, doing my ability to travel, and I apologize for that. Uh, the things that I see that are still, uh, we, we, we've still got a few issues, uh, we have issues with high consumption, okay, that's coming from a couple of sources. Uh, one is the training or the lack thereof in service orders changing out a meter, okay? The staff was doing the best job, they knew how, but it wasn't getting the job done, and as a result, it was showing part of reading off of an old meter, part of reading off of the new meter, and when you combine those two, they don't match, and it creates consumption that is extreme. Okay?
And is that just meters that were switched out from the time that we implemented the software?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
And, and how many could that be? How many was it, hundreds of them?
No, no. I thought I heard a number of thousands of workers.
I don't think, surely it wouldn't be that many in that, in that time.
I asked you about that.
You're right, you heard that number, but I, I can only imagine that the number wasn't encompass a lot of things, it certainly didn't, didn't, didn't represent thousands of meters, but yeah, you're right, you did hear that number.
Yeah, I, I would come here thinking that we might have had a thousand service orders, but not a thousand meters lost, um, that would be extremely large, extremely large for the size, size of my hill that we have. Uh, the other, uh, the other thing involves multiple services, and some of this carry over from conversions, uh, however, I believe some of it is, is still reoccurring as we're setting up some new, new accounts, and I think that's squarely on the training issue.
What, what do you mean by that, multiple services? I have two, three meters at one place?
No, it's just two garbages.
Garbages, stormwater, stormwater.
Correct. Uh, review needs to take place as new accounts are being set up to make sure that there is only one garbage and one sewer and one stormwater service that is, uh, that's, that is set to be billed. Uh, there were some unique qualities in the old system that were converted over, there were multiple active services in the old system, you picked and chose which one you wanted. Uh, we converted all active services, and in some cases, so, uh, multiple services were billed, that was a problem, and still finding remnants of that, and what I would suggest is that we run a query and we find out all of those multiple services and then have someone go through it and say, okay, if this one truly does belong, uh, should have two garbages on it, but it will leave it. This one does not, we move one and permanently remove it, so that it doesn't become a, you know, it doesn't be, uh, say the number of problems. The other item that was mentioned was the read dates, and let me kind of give a clarification on what the service dates versus actual read dates are. You have to define a period of cycle, that cycle goes from date A to, to date B, okay? That defines the period of activity that we're about to build. Okay, so if it is September one to September thirtieth, that is our cycle date, that means that anything that pertains to the bill that represents cycle one, let's say, happens between September one and September thirtieth.
And that's not your read dates?
That's the service date. So that is your, that is the cycle date, that are, that is the service dates.
Hey, that's a hard concept, to me, I think.
So if you add a service during that process, that will happen during that time, that's not when we read nine one one, that's what, if I go add another garbage, if I add another dumpster, it's not cycle.
How, how much trouble would it be to provide both?
Oh, we did provide both.
The service or cycle date and the read dates?
We did provide both. The problem came whenever this bill extract was sent to our third-party printer, they were picking up the service date rather than the actual read date, the actual read dates are provided in that file to our third-party printer.
But not to the customer?
If it was not being printed on the bill, they could have been all alone, but.
Therefore, what we're getting to the customer?
There you go, it was not getting to the customer because the wrong dates were being printed on the bill. Those read dates were there, actual read dates are there.
So read dates are being provided to print, printer sees the date, says, so they didn't reach the dates of someone billed, we're going to get it too, or, Mr. Wood, say, we can, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, don't want to speak for, for printer, printer, they could print both, I don't, I mean, I don't know if that's possible or not, but I mean, the data's theirs, there for them to pick up and print.
What, what value is the service dates to the average consumer? I mean, you know, if so, show service dates, July's nineteen to August nineteen, and then it says so many days out here, okay?
Correct.
My bill may have been read on the eleventh, or let's say on the twenty-first of July. And it may have been read in, you know, considerably less than that. But it looks like, based on what you see on those bills, is that my, that I'm paying for thirty days, when in reality, I may be paying for twenty-six.
Yes, sir, you are absolutely right.
So, that's the reason to me it's important that one of those dates ought to be when they read it the last time, the next date ought to be when they read it last, and then subtract the date, you know?
Would they agree with you more?
Sure, sure.
Good, no, agree with you more? I think that's more valuable to the customer?
I think, I think it means more, yeah, I know when people read it.
Sure. All we need to do is instruct our third-party printer to actually put those dates on it.
How hard is that?
I'm sorry?
How hard is that?
Three words on it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's, that's been submitted, submitted through on the...
Okay, good.
Last week?
They're working on it right now. I had an email, he should have it in the morning.
Okay. Now, that is already across, as soon as we discovered it, that we got on it. And provided the actual deals with the actual rates that they should be printing.
Can I ask you another question, please? In y'all's pretty significant experience, exposure across the country, because there's a lot of other places. Is there anything that you see in our system, in our program software-wise, reading-wise, transmission-wise, anywhere, that y'all see that would prompt increased reporting in Not attributable to changes in behavior or use levels relative to that, to that ticker account, other than the rounding, other than the rounding factor? Is there anything else that y'all can either detect or instinct that would result in higher reads, higher consumption reads?
I guess that question would really need to be related to how much reliability do we have in our measuring stick? So, what are we measuring it against? What? And most of all, what is?
Previous consumption, I think, under the...
Agree, yeah. Agree. Agree with previous consumption, but...
If we got a couple, that for the year two thousand nine and two thousand ten, hypothetically, was averaging three thousand gallons a month. And now they're averaging five thousand gallons a month. Same people, same house, same meter, no noticeable behavioral changes or use changes. Is there anything, anything that we've done that might prompt a higher consumption reporting?
Scott, the only thing, the only thing that any utility billing system has to go on is reads. That's it. So, if reads are truly taken as their face value, true reads, and they are computed based on those true rates, if there were scales involved, of course, scales become involved. And for the benefit of everyone that may not know, what a scale does is if I have a previous reading of, let's say, one thousand, I have a current reading of fifteen hundred, that's an actual difference of five hundred. If there is a multiplier on that meter or a scale of ten, then that reading consumption is multiplied by ten to convert to a five thousand gallon consumption, which is actually billed to the customer. But, no, reads are reads. And scales are scales. Now, if those two are consistent, then there should be a consistent history. That's all any utility billing system goes from, is, is, is reads.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Reviewing my own personal water bills, it was truncated, really caused a problem with the rounding down. And I didn't take a bath, at least once a week. I was utilizing what the bill said, two thousand gallons a month. We switched over, I jumped to thirty-four hundred, thirty-one hundred, twenty-eight, thirty-five. So, all of a sudden, what was happening was all this stuff was rounding down. And now, I'm getting a true read. And that could be, not the total problems, but that could be one of the issues that a number of the consumers are looking at and saying, "A water bill is just gone through the roof." On top of that, we have rates.
Yeah, a compounding, a compounding problem on top. Suffice to say, there are many factors involved.
So, the good news is, we're actually charging for consumption, for use, to the period of time that the meters were built.
From the previous read, current read.
Okay, and that's all set up, it's working. And then back to the point, we have the billing cycle, and then we have actually the read date. Now, you're saying, we're going to start that setup now where we are going to have that read date on the bill.
Yes.
So, it takes care of another issue.
As in process as we see.
Good. So, we've got, we've got some steps here that are positive, and we're moving ahead.
Yes.
And we still have. But I want to go back just a second to the parallel test. And I wasn't in the utility business, but I was in the business. We did four different times over a period of thirty years, we changed out our system. We ran a parallel test, sometimes two months up to six months, on equipment change. To make sure that we had no problem. And I think that when we ran one test that we ran, it turned out it was a session. And we went ahead, plowed ahead, and started the process. And that helped out. So, I'm not throwing any darts at you or anybody, but I'm just saying, we saw it, we saw a problem, what we should have done, pulled back. Now, we're muddling through it, we've got four months down the, down the drain. And we are seeing, who said?
Were you lying to anybody in the puddle?
No, I said, "Well, I hope, I would like more closer to you."
Okay. Scotty said, "Good question."
Jack?
Yes, sir.
Jack, you got it, please.
Yeah, I want to say thanks, start with, for your coming tonight and talking to us. One question that's come up to me several times is there's some people that have approached me with very big swings on bills, not, not from, say, seventy dollars to even a hundred and thirty dollars, but from seventy to ninety dollars to thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. And, you know, that's happened a couple of different meetings that we've talked to people. It seems like it's ten times as much as it was. Do you have any kind of remission about it there?
Yeah, without a little specifics, we just want to talk about it.
I'm not saying they didn't have a leak, they might have.
Yeah, that, to me, when you say ten times, let's talk about that, they're saying, we noticed some meter scales were wrong. Gary, tell me if I can interpret this, but a meter scale, they had the size of the pipe going, the size of the water pipe going to the meter. So, instead of ticking off every time a gallon goes through, they just tick off every time a ten gallons go through. And you'll see like your large hospitals and stuff like that, they may have a bigger pipe, so it only ticks every time a hundred gallons go through, but the meters is not spinning constantly. So, what happens is, we had a scale issue, we put some things were measured wrong in the old system, they were all scaled incorrectly. We made those scale corrections. So, if one was scaled as eight one, and it was a ten gallon scale, should have been a scale of ten, so they consumed five hundred gallons, is what they did this past, under the old system. And now, now that we put the multiplier of ten on there, that's now five thousand gallons. Not knowing the nuances of the read tables, usually you have an accelerated plan, you pay X amount, not a dollar per gallon, the first, first amount, and then a little bit less and a little bit less. So, that there could be a hundred or ten. The other thing we saw on this page here is we saw what we talked about earlier, where the meter swaps not being corrected, you know, completed in the software problem. Went out in the field, did the meter swap, when I come back and I do the read, I'm getting the read from the new meter, so let's pretend the read from my old meter was five thousand. Okay? That was my last read on my old meter. I put a brand-new meter out there that starts off at zero, when I go do my read, there's a five digit meter, my read's five hundred, it's going to assume it rolled over, rolled over through a hundred thousand to five hundred. That's where we came up with some very inflated bills. Now, that's, that is all the way around. The good news is, every time you go through a billing, a billing cycle, you have what you call is a bill calculation register that you can print. A section of that is called abnormal consumption. And that's where it shows you, these are out of bounds. And the way we're setting up parameters on that abnormal consumption, we can set them to be as tight you want or as loose as you want. And what I mean, if you say, "I want to see anything that's more than five percent different than what it has been," show up here, well, your report's going to be pretty long, we're going to say, "I want to see everything as a hundred percent difference or fifty percent difference." What's your, what's your gray sphere, I mean, gray sphere of what I'm saying? Is that it, your question?
Yes, it is. I think that's due to real health consequences.
But, when you go through...
I think we did this, excuse me, I think we did that, or some slight variation on that, but achieved the same purpose in the last bills that were sent out. The only exceptions to that were, were no pre, were no history, impaired.
Yes, sir.
Just, I think when we discussed that some time back, initially, we didn't have that kick out and everything would just flow on through without catching. And one was set up where we would have that system picking out and see what personally looked at, the questionable bills, because those were just flying on out the door, sorry, to respond to that problem. And the other thing we noticed is that it was sometimes at a different point than what they're used to, and then they're looking at it, so there was a couple of things, yeah.
Let me ask you a question, you know, right now, it's very difficult to get a handle on the, what revenues we should be anticipating from either our rate increase on a monthly basis. And it's kind of hard to do because some of our months have gone with maybe one billing cycle and one month may have two and on down the road. So, we haven't got to the stability point where we say, you know, we anticipate we're going to normally get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from water revenues in July, August, February each month, you know? Having said that, what, do you have, are there any reports that can be generated that would tell us, I'm coming back, regress a little bit here, but would tell us how many of the meters were on low multiples? In other words, we know, we know there were certain, some have been discovered that were like apartments, something that may have been billed at either a one or a ten and should have been a hundred, say. Is there something that, report that generated that?
Five hundred fifty-four were identified. And I didn't know if you remember that, five hundred fifty-four that were identified?
It's under bills.
Given correction.
Yeah, that was under, under, under by our staff, my staff, and your staff. Is that correct? And we just, we had our stretch sheet, W S plus, and we went and changed it, that's...
Okay, so, five hundred fifty-four, we know that at a minimum, their bill should have been ten times what it was, right?
We know that they were, per identified, identifying, per the meters that were identified or stopped, they were scaling correctly. Some were scaled at ten, some were scaled, should have been scaled a hundred, as I pare as you would. I can't remember the specifics of all five hundred fifty-four that's...
But, but, but the very minimum would have been at ten, ten times what they were paying for years, right? If they, if they's five hundred fifty that were scaled wrong, the minimum scale, it would be ten.
Is there increasing, sure.
Okay.
One other thing that the old system did do for us is, let's say that we would produce a million gallons of water a day, and, and billing six hundred. So, we're not, we didn't know what we were not billing. In the system now, that's just been put in, we have a monthly check that says, you produce a million, we're billing for a million. So, we know that we're not losing any water anywhere, or not, under billing. So, that, that's it. And it's something we're doing now, not to hold up. So, we are saying...
I don't think that would identify what your, where your loss at window counts.
No, it won't, but what it will do, it'll identify that there's four hundred thousand gallons unaccounted for. That's what we want triggered, versus sitting here happy for, for years.
It is a blip.
Right, right. Now, it actually does identify the accounts that the idle of consumption is happening on the company bill.
In our system.
Our system.
Did you tell us, did you tell us more clearly and more readily what the system, system meaning distribution, treatment and distribution system is?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're...
Let's go back to that revenue part. Is there anything that will, anything we can do to tell us how much of an increase in revenue we should anticipate from, on the average from those five hundred fifty-four?
I believe, I believe, we have this announced on...
You know one that they did that?
I'm sorry?
You know, if y'all did, well, you may know, I don't know.
Could you mind if I ask a question?
No, go ahead.
When we did the meters, when we swapped, corrected the meter scales, did you do some analysis on what we had changed in revenue in the city?
I did not, no.
Okay.
I think they did some sampling, I think they set handpicked some of the larger ones, some apartment complexes.
Your staff and...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Based on the very small sampling of mine, yeah, it was in the neighborhood of thirty-five to forty percent capturing actual usage versus truncating that we had been doing. So, we have been, when we get everybody out of water bill, roughly thirty to forty percent not showing what the real usage is. Now, we're showing it. So, I think we're looking at, I'll keep it on low here, thirty percent increase.
Yeah, so, they're essentially being billed more at a higher rate than before.
Yeah. Very things, very subjects to talk about here, and I'll make sure we're not getting far from that.
Okay.
And number one is the rounding of the reach in the old system versus actual reading in our system. Number two is the meter swaps, or the scaling issue. And then number three is the rate increase.
Right.
All three of those have an impact on revenue, on increase in revenue. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's a little...
I'm looking strictly at usage.
Yes, if you take that first one, where the rounding versus the actual reads, you have this analysis there.
I'm looking at the rate increase and anything else.
I'll follow it up.
And the fact is, that's what we sell. We sell the usage, and then just what we apply to it as the cost.
Yeah, the question, I'm not mad at you, but how could that be more than ten percent? Is that, is that, if you don't, I trust you, but I'm just not, it seems like...
Well, they say, they say that the actual usage that it was twenty-nine hundred.
Right.
It's rounded down to two thousand.
Right.
That's nine hundred gallons. There's nine gallons, so that would be, that would be fifty percent. Another time, it could be five hundred, so it, 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 it varied. But, but, and every one of them was a flat two thousand gallons, every month, two thousand gallons. Then when we went into the system, all of a sudden, I'm getting a solid read, I'm getting a read of thirty-four fifty, you know? So, I could have been sitting real close to three thousand all the time, and it never did kick over. Now, I'm getting the readings, and it's picking it up.
And there's like, that depends on the timing of the reads as well, what, is it, your consumption may not change, but if I go five days later to the read, I'm kicking it up, I'm kicking over that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the reason it's important to have that read date on there, that we know it's got. So, I think, I think there's a major, major advantage that's been placed. It's going to take a while to work our way through. It's gonna take a while to work our way through the form that you had, because we have a number of people out there, but I think we got some-
Big dish.
Okay.
I haven't seen the form, I'm kinda excited, I saw it, I heard about it, especially, let's understand the details, like, one of the details, like, I get you really quick on what, what the solution is.
Well, I, you know, uh, actually, you know, we, we still have some problems out there, no doubt, and we have some folks that, uh, um, have indicated that, you know, some of them just said, my water bill is doubled and so forth. And quite honestly, uh, my personal water bill has basically, from oh nine, I was just, if you take away the garbage, you take away the stormwater, uh, my water and sewer bill was in the low thirties. And for eight months in two thousand eleven, it's averaging more than eighty-five dollars, averaging, now. While I don't know that my lifestyle has changed that much, the, uh, I am showing additional consumption, uh, from an average of like three thousand, thirty-one hundred, up to over five thousand for those eight months. Now, you know, maybe I use that, if you take, if you take that rounding and put that, add that on to the three from the previous, uh, before the new software, you're at four thousand. So, you know, as y'all been talking about, a thousand gallons, twenty-four and five, so, you know, I'm not, not that big a deal, but it does show me that there very well could, uh, be, and very well are a lot of people who, basically, their actual water and sewer bill is doubled. Even, I, I'd really not anything new, you particularly, I guess, there, but, uh, if, if the read is right, then, you know, this, what this kinda tells me, if, if other residential consumers are very similar to this, uh, we would not have had, to get the same results, we certainly would not have had to raise the water rates as much as we did water and sewer rates. We wouldn't have had to do that. We're beginning to see that now, I think, in the fact of this rounding and the fact that, uh, you know, we're, we're adding, um, a lot of commercial customers at a t, minimal of a ten multiple, where there'd be more revenue coming in. Now, trying to get a handle on exactly what that might be and what effect that might have on our, on our revenue budget is a, is a, is something that we're gonna have to do, and, and the sooner the better, I think. Um, you know, I've got, I've kinda got mixed feelings here, that I would, I would really like to recommend that, that we maybe we either reduce or rescind that, uh, rate increase that we did, so that we, we should have a lot of complaints out there. And some of those complaints actually, uh, I mean, many of them are obviously legitimate, some of them have to do with simply just the rate increase, I think. And, and those, if you roll a rate back, that would probably free up the staff not having to deal with some of those who, you know, just because of the thirty or thirty-five percent increase or more in the bill, or doubling the bill, or whatever, uh, have, have, have come in and they're worried about their bill. You know, there are those whose bill just, for whatever reason, either despite their consumption, just went out of, out of reason, and it's really unbelievable, be allowed to staff a time to work on those. But I, I think that's something we need to look at and think about, how do we, how do we do that? Because the city took on, uh, when we began the software, uh, new software, uh, we had several variables at one time. We had the software coming in new, we had a thirty-plus percent rate increase, we had actual meter readings instead of rolling it back, and we also even as much as had, uh, a co, a new contractor to mail out our bills.
And you had changes to that.
Changes to staff as well? A lot of variables, sir.
And, and, and we were told, we were told by, by someone associated with another prominent coastal water and sewer utility, that they never instituted a rate increase during the summer.
Right.
And that was probably that during-
Yeah, that's probably a mistake, too.
Doing that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, this is a call meeting, which means that I can make a motion, uh, for let's roll back the increase, rate increase to the old rate, get the problem solved, come back and relook at what we need to do. It could very well be what you're saying, that the increase is not needed due to the fact that we've been under billing, we've been missing out, and we're gonna get new reads. And I think it would be appropriate for citizens to realize that, and I think it will be, uh, so, we should-
Please, yes, ma'am.
But, we did have, you made, you were making a motion.
Okay.
Uh, and, and let, let me say something there, although I'm not sure exactly had, what your motion was, whether it was to roll everything back or, or maybe a, a portion. What I was thinking is that if we, if we really took a look at that and asked our staff to give us their best guess as to, uh, the difference between, particularly the difference between, uh, uh, our, our, the rate that we had and the additional revenue we would automatically get based on the, uh, multipliers and also the, the rounding, uh, the actual reads. Uh, if we had that, then we could know for sure how much all the way back or, you know, part of the way. And maybe we could get that reported back to us by, uh, the next meeting, which would then we could actually, which would be the first, uh, November tour, which is not that far away.
Can I just say, I'd like for us to consider the rollback, but I think we need to get these issues resolved before we try to make changes to go back. And get their water bills correct, and then give them the rollback.
Let's say, we had, what, how would you state your motion, if you, you wanted to, since you did make a motion, then we'll discuss it.
I'll say this before I make that.
Okay.
The number was thrown out that we under billing that we thought we were missing out on, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a month, that we haven't captured. My way of thinking, that rate increase we did was trying to make up for that. Let's back down, just rescind that rate increase, and hit this squared away, then we could come back and look at the rates again. Maybe we don't have to do a rate increase, I don't think we will, from what we found. And I would propose that we react on this immediately, and I would like to have that as the motion to rescind the rate increase, and let's get, because we're meeting tonight, this emergency session, and if we roll it for another week or two, we're-
It's weird, right?
We're doing it, yeah. And, and these people need relief, they need to understand that we're trying to do something, so I make that a motion.
Okay, well, have a second. Here, you have a second, motion, thanks.
I'm sorry, just, yeah, I'll say something, I, I'll be right back to you there.
I, I was just gonna add that, uh, Mr. Brian and myself were just talking about these same issues, as, as you were bringing them forward here, uh, Mr. Mayor. And I can understand what Mr. Berthold's coming from, but thankfully, I think it would be in the best interest of the city to have staff take a look at how rolling back, as you, as you indicate, do we roll it all the way back? Do we roll back, roll it back a portion? Mr. Berthold is saying, we send it all the way back, and then if we need to make a rate increase, it's a little- I tell you, if we roll it back, and then we come back again and then re-raise rates, I think that would hurt our, would be more detrimental than taking a hard, strong look at what we have discovered, and what our revenues may be, uh, with this, uh, newfound system and the under billing or the over billing or the multipliers or whatever else that we got in place now, and see exactly how much we can roll that back, not affecting our water and sewer point. And I think we need to give staff time to research that, come back to us with, uh, some figures, and then let us decide at that time. And I would think, uh, it would be detrimental for us to wait until the work session that's coming up in, in November for us to take a look at this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's Brian.
Yeah, I, I was gonna make a similar comment, and, and also add, and John, I, I would be the first one, the second, if I knew the facts and the figures, maybe a thirty-five percent rollback is warranted, or maybe a twenty-five percent rollback is warranted. But, let's get it right this time, and possibly even retroactive, if, retroactive a month or two rollback. But, but let's, let's stay the course what we have right now. Again, I understand there's been no penalties, no late fees, or, or fines imposed, these, these dollars are, are saying we're almost at the end of this tunnel, let's stay the course another week or month. But if we have all the facts we need to know to make a motion next week, uh, I'll be glad to second that motion.
Hey, let, let me, let me say one thing, I, I would, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
And I would compare with, with these two, um, because I know, Bill had said this originally, this, this was, well, he'd said originally, you know, if we, if we, we'll go ahead and go along with this, now that we find out it's, it's too high, then I want to be able to reduce it back down. And we all want to do that, we don't want to charge people, we're not trying to make money, we're just trying to pay bills. And I, I'm the mayor, I think we need another week to get more information, and that's what I think.
I came, I came-
One decision, Mayor.
Hang on, let, let me say one thing, I, I, I came in here initially really prepared to recommend the full rollback, but I received some, uh, financial information for the, uh, revenues of water and sewer, just as I came in here, so, that sort of tempered that at some point. And so, I really think that there may be some room to roll back, and if there is, we need to do so, but we don't have actually the total data to do so. The revenues are not really where they should be for this same period last year. Uh, it's still difficult to say if we're really comparing apples and apples to me, whether or not there's some that, some payments that are coming in in, um, say, October that need to go back and be credited to September, that were really water usage September. And I'm no accountant, so, I mean, somebody else ought to tell me that. But, uh, you know, we're, we're better at six hundred thousand less between, uh, if, if you look at this, the, uh, months of May, June, July, August, and September, in which this, uh, uh, increase was implemented, we're still behind last year. And, and part, uh, we just don't have a handle exactly, uh, what makes up all that just yet. But I think, I think we need to look at that and get the data and information for the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we've had a number of meetings on water issue. Every one of them has said, the staff down in the water department is up to their eyeballs in their volumes. So, now what we're saying to the staff, in seven days, or whatever it is, we're gonna come in here and they're gonna be able to bring forward a detailed example, what we do are wrong. I guarantee you, in seven days, they're gonna come in and they're gonna say, we've scratched the surface, we don't know, and let's push it back, which I don't blame them, they can't, I guarantee you they can't. To the fact finding that we're asking, to me, is straightforward, very simple, and I think we owe it to the citizens that it's been not seconded as the normal process, therefore, I'll shut up. Yeah, thank you.
Just, I, I think it's very important for us as a council is to get it right, and I think that's what we're saying here, is that if we do it, we want to do it right. And if it takes more than seven days, then it takes more than seven days, but as long as we do it and we get it right, so we, we don't have to go back and visit it again, I think that is the important thing.
Mr. Mayor?
One more comment, and then I think we've kind of left that, go ahead.
I'm glad that Councilman Tanner has realized from last meeting, we had six hundred thousand dollars, and immediately came up and said, let's spend it on something. I'm glad to see you into this new framework.
That's politics, y'all.
Mr. Berthold, some, there's no room there.
Uh, I'm having a little more here.
There's no room there.
Okay, all right, we, we talked about that one enough, so let's go with the next one, yeah.
He went, oh.
You got something?
I got a couple recommendations, or y'all can ask me.
You got some recommendations, we wanna hear those.
Sure.
Okay, uh, these are things we've done, just to make sure you understand, you know, and I had, if I made this trip out here and didn't say it, I might be getting when I get home, we want you to help us for a long time. We're here to be a partner in all of this, okay? We've got a dedicated support person, one support person, there was a time, Miss Floyd, that's wrong, she fell off, A person, yes, that's wrong. We've also had people here for training the last couple of weeks, are available for training the last two, three weeks to help you out more. Here's some recommendations I have, fast due penalty process, I was talking about it earlier, is not being executed at this point. I believe in previous discussions, you're working on changing ordinance, is that a fair statement?
Uh, I, I believe that's the case, I think, I think that's been brought up, that we have some, uh, awareness that has some conflict within it regarding, uh, the penalties and stuff.
Once, once you get that spelled out, we'll help you set up a fast due penalty process, but one of our concerns is, uh, is staff allocation, because that means with four billing cycles, we're all part of doing that, that's one per week per month. That means every week, your staff has to do, hey, Billy, check, make your stride, check me on review of billing register, they have to do a past due process for one of the previous cycles, they have to do a penalty process for one of the previous cycles, and they have to do a cutoff process. That's four very intensive things that they're gonna be involved with, and you want them to do that right. So, that's one of our concerns, that you get the right people, you get the amount of people in there doing that job, so I just wanna throw that out there. That's coming, someday, we'll help you, when it's time, when y'all get to the fine, we'll help you set it up, we'll train you on how to do it, and that's consumed at that point, you gotta make sure you have the right plan, cross that up.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Porter, you had mentioned something about training, have, I understand, have adequate training that they need regarding this program, or do we need to look at having some additional training here?
We trained your staff, they've asked for some additional stuff, I've asked for specifics, let's line up, let's line up specifics, so we knock them down, because if we say we need training on everything, I can come in and train for a week and maybe not get the exact mark of what you need, so we're really kinda need, at this point, need to get specifics. We also understand that we come in and train a lot of things, by training you, and I think the council probably have the same issue, if I come in and train you on how to use a new system for five solid days, probably somewhere around Thursday afternoon, you're saturated. You're reaching consumption points where you're, you know, the retention level's not there, so, we know we, we feed it too fast when we train. But there's some other trainings, I was talking with Kim earlier tonight, she's identifying some specifics, what I wanna look at is, um, and I'll use those from Mr. Verstred as a, as an example just for this thing, and he needs specific training on cash collections, a specific piece, instead of just sending one, somebody here to train for him for a day. It's probably getting him on the phone, because when he's here, when I'm here with him, he's getting consumed by a lot of other things around him. If I hit him on the phone, we probably spend forty-five minutes, an hour, and work the same, see him ask questions, the way our training works, we log in and we're looking at his screen while we're training, or they're looking, we're working through that together, so, we identify specific training issues, we'll knock them out.
One of the things that I initially was thinking about, in a training issue that I was wanting y'all here, but then after I found out from Kim and from Plumb, about sitting at that screen, training Houston, and really-
Well, it's not Plumb.
Love, love.
Plumb.
That's safe, stay.
Plumb. Not a secure route, either way.
Okay. And then, you're, you're on the screen, they're on the screen, and it is very focused, and I think it's an excellent way of doing it, and, and I appreciate that, getting into that type of the program.
So, you can do it either way.
But not, but I think that, from what I understand from them, it was really a focal point.
And pre-experiment for houses here, we basically, for lack of a better phrase, sequestered, uh, wandered into another room, that way, because we're working on something, let's work on it, let's get it done, let's get focused, because if, you all know, I'm getting consumed by other things, I'm not retaining what I probably shouldn't.
Thank you.
I have, I have two quick questions. One, do you think we have adequate staff there, do we need to hire some more people? You know, because I don't want this to be a, we don't have enough people to get this job done problem.
Uh, one of my next recommendations specifically, the city of Kansas, no, you're, you're fine, the city of Kansas needs to determine the appropriate staffing levels.
In your opinion?
My opinion? Uh, I got one that's like everybody else.
I know.
I'll take your line.
And would you say one person, two people?
Uh, I, I don't, I haven't been here enough to make that recommendation.
Let me speak to that, let's do a little bit. Again, at the outset of the meeting, I now feel, we've gone ahead and taken the initiative of bringing in another person. We've got another fat person that supports the work at eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, and we feel, uh, encouraged by, by that. Now, again, we didn't have the form authorization to do that, so we're gonna be visiting y'all in some sort of budgetary amendment. We're bringing them in on a, on a contract basis now. If they work out, then we'll actually convert them to, to a regular full-time employee. Secondly, I think, in my opinion, we are still short in somebody else in the field. We've got one person reading eight thousand meters, and the meter reading is not as much a problem as the various work orders that come at you. Rereading my meter, um, doing, uh, changing out, doing, there's some of those things that you feed us. But there's a lot that is our responsibility, and I'm, I'm not feeling that this one person, I rode with that person one day last week. I, I think, I think we may need to look at another person in the field.
And, and, and I was excited, Mr. Williams, you said you hired, you hired additional person taking that action. And in part of the discussion area, we're saying, you know, we may, that you may need to rebook at the way you read your meters, or the way you read your meters, instead of skipping all of the city, get a little, all of the city get a little more early about it. That's something that we buy efficiency for.
Second question I have is, I know there was a town down in the water department this week, this town did, but is there anything that any of us can do, not being trained, that would help get this faster?
Don't get lost.
Yeah, that's, yeah, situation's so hard to answer.
Uh.
I mean, can we, is there anything, not being trained, can we, can we answer phones? Could we, you know, or is there something that we, we would be able to, give your opinion?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, but, no, I.
Having men down there, oh, wait, you don't want to run and get these people away. And I, and I, um, I asked not to be put on the phone, because they were giving some technical questions that I could not respond to. Those folks down there were inundated, with people coming to the window, with the phone calls coming in, with staff coming in, so I started doing manual labor. I followed, you know, I opened mail, I did whatever. They said, "We need you here," that's where I went.
With respect to the center, with respect to you, Mr. Goodwin, I announced you earlier about that rolling ball.
Right.
They're sprinting right now, don't ask them to stop and try to do something.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, answering, just didn't want to get in the way.
Exactly. And if they can, if you can help with some modeling or something like that?
This is what they get. My bill is delayed, I haven't received it, so I've gotta stop and find out what cycle they're in. I've got a problem with my bank draft, the draft that wasn't shown on the bill. That was, that wasn't an issue that we had, I think that's been corrected, but that's taking time. My service dates, my rate date, what they made, they're not accurate. Uh, you won't accept my partial payment, you gotta take up time with that. The rate increase is too high, gotta take up time with that. I'm paying for sewer, just because I only wanted to water my lawn, you gotta take up time with that. Encourage you to begin irrigation there. Uh, I, I, I don't use the garbage service, we heard, we heard that recently. I don't use garbage, I don't have a paper garbage, I'm garbageing on my water bill, I don't use garbage. I can't access my kennel, the city website. Well, they can access it, but, but sometimes you gotta walk through it. I need you to accept my credit card over the telephone. Now, y'all authorized us to convert to a contract door, but that's not yet been achieved for, I think, some other reasons. I think that was something about right in the middle of this. But right now, if you go down there, you'll hear them stop and have to take up some, take up time taking somebody's credit card later over the telephone.
And you run this with that figure, and you run this with being selective like I am.
Well, Mr. Williams, I don't think you have to go to your home there, I didn't get the picture, but my hat's off to you ladies down there. They're off to you.
No, I, I want you to, I, I would like you to address the volume of complaints as opposed to, you know, you talked about that. What, what, what is the volume that you, you think, number wise?
You know, I'm sorry, gentlemen, too, because Mr. Renee's down here. Something, thank you, appreciate it.
Y'all, they have to define, and I'm not being flip, to say that y'all almost have to define complaint, because a lot of these things that I just cited, and some others that the town didn't get to, could be categorized as a complaint. If you look at the number, and we have tried to keep an accurate law or registry, if you look at the number of complaints that we've had from people saying, "My consumption slash bill is too high." Not any of these other over here things. But my bill is too high. Since August twenty-third, Donna from Wanda's records, from the mayor's records, and from my records, has recorded ninety-three, uh, of, of those types of complaints. Basically, my function, which places dollars is too high. Uh, ninety-three. We've got eighty-two hundred and three accounts, so. And the majority of them were, was located in, uh, Long Canyon, St. John? They were. The majority would, would have been in Long Canyon, yes, sir.
Then you come down to the fact that you have actual true readings of consumption and thirty percent increase in rate, and you're gonna have a bill that's too high.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's one, I think that's part of the, part of the situation there, no doubt, that I think the reading, reads, well, there's some aberrant reads out there, certainly, though, a lot of them are probably very accurate, and, and, uh, you know, it's just the rate increase along with a slightly elevated usage from the rounding that has created a lot of the problems. I tru, I truly believe, having looked at a number of these, the things you just said are spot on, Mr. Barry Ford, but the one thing, I, I go back, and we burn this up the hard way, to what someone else told us yesterday, was that they never instituted rate increase during the summer. Nobody realizes how much water they're using during the summer. But when you look at annualized consumption increase, a lot of them, I won't say all of them, but a lot of them, use two or three times as much water during the summer months, from, from year to year. And, and human nature, which I guess, kids, and we don't think about it, we don't realize it, we forget it. But then when you compound those other factors in there, it, it, it shoots that dollar amount up.
I have a question, uh, you said we're almost to the hunt. Um, in comparison to our last billing, to our prior billing, how was the issues on that? Um, did we have more concerns and complaints, or were they lesser?
Um, I have to look at, and I'm not sure that the record day, recordation date of this, um, would tell me that, Ms. Rose. Um, I, I can't, I can't answer that. Probably, probably more as a result of the most recent billing, I'm guessing. I was down there Friday and Monday. Again, I still got my code Gregory job to do. I'm mildly interested in this, I know how important it is, but I still got other things to do, too. So I have to, have to try to keep several touches of all jokes. I spent some time down there Friday and Monday, and it was, it was right chaotic. I think after Monday, it began to, to lessen somewhat. I was down today, and, um, and it was much calmer today, but, but it's the lull before the storm. When we send out those double bills.
Oh, boy.
During next week, um, it's, it's gonna.
That letter that you sent out to the council, that, I mentioned it earlier, that letter is going to all, to all consumers.
Yes, sir. We held off on sending that until the outcome of this meeting, that just, we didn't want to send that letter and there be something that was a product of this meeting that might have contradicted or confused that. But we're prepared to send that out, yes, sir.
So that goes to everybody.
The intention is for that to go to all eighty-two hundred and three customers, or whatever we've got at that, at that moment. Thank you. Does anyone have any more questions for the, for the hour here? Okay.
One for one, but we.
Oh, for one, yeah. You'll be off the hook that way, Dean. Okay. Hang on a second, Hooky, whoa. Okay, uh, what I had said at the beginning of the meeting, that's really basically all we have, except there were, uh, I did say that we would allow any input anyone has here toward the end of the meeting. Hooky raised his hand. Andy, what we got here? Okay, well, we'll just take them.
Alphabetical order.
Okay, uh, Hooky, you wanna come up with whatever comment you want?
I would be just admit.
It's sort of like our ten-minute public input here, whatever comment you want.
Should we excuse one?
Sure, I think.
Can you hear what somebody's gonna say?
Well, I'll, I'll go.
It's only ten minutes, I can stay ten more.
Yeah, there you go, okay.
I want to thank the gentleman that came all the way from Motherland, living in Dallas for many years. I didn't know that's quite a trip. And, uh, oh, you do that, that, just sort of, yeah, cool. Just sort of, I don't know about that. That's, that's, uh, texted that.
Yeah, careful, yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Well, with that said, I'm, I'm glad to hear that there's some things that are happening that are really positive, that's gonna help our citizens, in particular, our council people that have been taking it, in particular, Wanda and her staff. Because they have tend to taken a beating. Our citizens have taken a beating, and it's not over yet. And I'll go back, I've got a, also like Mr. Barry Ford, I have got a background in business. And I have to be rather negative in saying that I hope this proves to you that you being the experts with your system, that you should know that at this time fault, that you don't go live with this system until you've run it. Because we have four or five months of pure hell in this city. And y'all are part of the problem, because you're the expert. If we weren't ready, if we weren't ready, you need to tell us. You need to tell us and not be sole managers to get the contracts signed. We're big people, we can take it. But right now, our citizens, our council, our staff, everybody has just been through a rough time. And I honestly believe that we'd do some consideration. And with that said, I thank you.
Got it, Dan?
Almost forgot what I was gonna say. You made such a good presentation about the problem, it is a real problem. I left my personal bills to like summers, when I did the factory summers, but I know you use more water in the summers. So you have to go back and see how much water you used in factory summers, to see if the reality what you pay now is compared with the water you use. Because each summer, I use the same amount of water practically. And checking the bills, I use the same amount of water. But what also be, I hadn't heard anything tonight, explain to me why my water bill doubled. And you, practically same amount of water in those several months, doubled. My water bill running about forty-five, fifty dollars a month, and that's up to ninety. For what reason? Nobody's explained to me, even the new gentleman hasn't explained to me why it's doubled. And I hadn't heard anything like. There should be something done by this council. Kicking a cannon down the road is not acceptable. Some action has to be taken. Those people are hurting out there. They want some relief. How do you work out the relief to leave it up to experts? Something should be done by this council. This head, keep putting this off, we gotta check it, we gotta check it. It's been going on for three months. Let's do something. Let's take some action. Thank you.
One, uh, one thing that I would, would ask now, that's a good point, there's, uh, you know, we had a thirty percent increase, roughly, or plus or minus, where you have, some people's bills have doubled, and just, uh, somehow or another, is there any possibility that in the calculation, we actually verified by hand calculations or whatever, that we're actually calculating those bills accurately in the various, uh, categories as you go up to there, in usage and everything? So we, we hand calculated those, and it looks good? So it seems like some are getting some back.
Uh, my name's George Crimmon, I'm in Greystown. I've got six bills here that I've, uh, seven, that I've received since March. Um, been a lot of changes. Another gentleman talked about the, uh, reading, adding another zero to the, uh, meter reading, and nothing to do with what you had before, same thing, absolutely same. What you did before, you had four numbers, subtracted, worked out by ten, you still come up with four numbers that you gotta do, same thing. Usage, I don't know, I didn't figure the usage. I had a usage in March, a five hundred. Usage in April, thirty-nine fifty. Usage in, uh, May, twenty-four fifty. Usage in, uh, June, fifty-three hundred. Usage in July, twenty-seven fifty. And the bill I got yesterday, the other day, usage in August to, uh, September, fifty-nine fifty. There are only two of us at home. We're not doing anything different than we've done any other year. And all of a sudden, I'm getting usage here, usage here, oh, usage here, and usage here. It looks like somebody just taking the number out of the hat and just say, oh, this guy's paying the bill, that's just, just one of the uses.
And we don't have a sprinkler system on either.
And I don't answer for it. I don't.
How does that compare with the, maybe the same months last year? And if you look at those.
I can tell you that the, the usage from what I can remember averaged about twenty-eight to thirty-four hundred a whole year. I, I, I'd have to pull up the bills that I got. I've got every single water bill since I moved Greystown. You know, I can tell you, I can tell you, but, uh, this is ridiculous. I don't use twenty-nine hundred a gallon one, one a month, and fifty-nine the next month.
Part of that could be.
Part of this was, we were out of town for a week, so, uh, during these, two, two and three, decent places.
You know, mine kinda went up and down, too. I kinda justified what mine was for a brief period of time, not as expensive as yours, but.
Even with the, the, uh, uh.
Additional time. Some of them, some of them may have been, like, instead of four weeks, it may have been five or more weeks, included that bill, and then the next one was a less, a lesser period. And it might have gone down.
That's not the issue.
There is.
There is. Back into, uh, uh, March, in April, thirty-two days on the building site. April to, uh, May, thirty days, thirty-one days, thirty days, forty-eight days, seven days, and this is the highest deal I've left.
Yeah, you know what, mine, mine had eighteen days, and it said the service period was from July nineteenth to August nineteenth, and it was, and the total number of days, eighteen. And then, so I think, I think that's part of what they're trying to get worked out and, and change, too, because with the longer the, uh, reading dates instead of the service period.
Well, you know, I can understand, but you're talking about the rounding up and downs. If you're in the federal government, and you're doing your taxes, and if you had more than fifty cents, you rounded up. If you had less than fifty cents, you rounded down. I don't know how the Canton water and system was before, but apparently, from what you said, if you have nine hundred, you go completely down. That's not very good sense to me.
No, no, that's, that's very, very.
I don't know what plan implemented that, but that doesn't work in anybody's life. And, and it's, if you're gonna, if you're gonna actually do the rounding up and rounding down, you do it like IRS, at least they give you a, a chance. That's, that's no chance, I mean, from what you, you were saying, you're.
What I, I wish you did is follow last year's summers. What I, I wish you did is follow last year's summers and take a look at them in the, in the...
I'm only six years old.
Don't make that way, but I, I was just saying, didn't you come out on these forms and get everybody to take a look at them again? Have you, have you filed anything else here?
No, I came down today and ladies, the desk, they have something to run around, I just walked in, you know, I...
They don't know how to apply any of this, sir.
The other thing that I was gonna mention...
No offense, but...
Uh, about the gentleman here doing, doing... I used to work for Southern Bill. I used to be in the long-distance grade. We have a rating, we get our rates in, and we have to bill at a certain time, new rates. There wasn't one single time we put a program in system to start billing somebody until we did so many ones, comparable ones. And, and, and this is, even though he says there's a lot of different pool areas that you gotta check, um, there's quite a few areas in long-distance phone bills that you gotta check. You've got international, you've got local, you've got long-distance, you've got areas in one place, you cross the street, it's another bit. So there's a lot of checking you have to do there. So implementing the system without doing a parallel is completely... Excuse my...
Crazy.
That's all.
I'm just, but I got one question I wanted to ask. Let me just finish. Wanda, is that, is that your name right? This happened to us once before, when he mentioned the scales you're talking about, the size of the water coming through. When we first moved to Great Sky, um, all of a sudden, we started getting some huge bills. And we, we couldn't figure out why. We called and come down here and badgered y'all to death. And it always came back to saying, well, we'll send somebody out to read your water here. Or we'll, you know, they did that, they read the thing in the ground and everything, they couldn't know everything by. It's just really what you're using. But there's no way we could use that comparing it to our neighbors. It was out of sight, I mean, it was hundreds of dollars. And we could not get anybody, it took us forever in the water department to get anybody to finally help us figure out and, and that, oh, we're charging you, you're, you're the wrong scale. We're charging you for a bigger amount of water coming through this thing, I'm probably not using our terminology, but... So then what we was really using? We are just a two-person family. And we're, we've been charging you for a whole lot more water coming through there. Why did it take so long? And this is another thing I'm thinking, just from what I've heard tonight. Maybe that y'all need to go back since this conversion was done. And I was just telling him, maybe ours has gone back to the old split, you know, what it was a couple of years ago? And from information that was gathered, maybe that's what you need to do on these peoples that's so out of whack, which that's the first thing we're gonna do, is come to request to check that ours is the proper scale. Because that could be jacking ours up again, and that could be part of your problem. And it's, apparently, it's a very hard thing to find and to determine, because it took forever. And when y'all finally figured it out, you gave us credit each month, you credited for several months. But had we, but sir, my point in saying all this is that it's very hard for, I guess, your staff to think of all the variables that it could be. And then, um, they're lim, they're limited, you have a limited staff. You don't have a lot of people to be able to go out and just scour all of this. We had to wait weeks to get people to come out and visit us. But had we have just, but we was told on and on again and again, this is correct, this is correct, I'm sorry, maybe you have a leak. Well, we didn't. And finally, when it was figured out, it took a very long time. If we had walked away from that, we would probably have moved from our house in Great Sky, because we couldn't afford to live there. But we pers, we was persistent and pursued on. Otherwise, we just got the same story here, the same thing over and over and over. It's right, it's all what we got today. It's right, I mean, you know, from everything they're looking at, it, and then what they're looking at, that's all they know to tell you. Because everything looks good on paper, but there could still be an underlying problem, is all I'm saying here. So I think that there needs to be more investigation on these issues where people's bills are so out of whack, and that's all I can say. And, and as far as residents, I applaud you for asking us to roll that back. It is a burden on everybody, and when you send them a letter, your office is going to be, they're probably gonna have five people from your building here. Because it's, it's not gonna be pleasant when you tell them you're gonna double their bill.
Mayor and council? The worst possible thing I've heard here today is that there's gonna be a double bill. John Beresford described, uh, people in the water department are up to their eyeballs, so it's good, good they're up to their eyeballs because when you double that bill, they're gonna see a tsunami coming.
That's right.
Everything they're gonna see. So there's gotta be a creative way to catch up without doing that. One thought I had is, first of all, don't double bill in one bill. Save forty-four cents or whatever it is. Put it in the same envelope, but bill one bill and make it do in whatever the normal time is, and bill the second bill ninety days. Because you are gonna have, I could tell you personally, I talked to twenty to twenty-five women, maybe it's just River Green. In the last week, one guy today, I almost fell over when he told me it, he said, he said his water bill was about seventy dollars a month. He said, but I don't ever look at it, my wife pays it, I will bet he doesn't know what it is. Because everybody else is talking two-hundred dollar bills, two-hundred dollar bills. I had two people, one person emailed me the other night, six-hundred dollar bill, another guy called me the same night, six-hundred dollar bill. I know the nine-fifty, a twelve-hundred. I talked to a lady today that told me about her friend, they got a four-hundred-and-eighty dollar bill, she cannot feed her kids, I mean, literally. She said to her, she doesn't know what she's gonna do, she's gonna get her water cut off, or, 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 you know, there's really no solution. You gotta feed your kids through, but honestly, that's what I was hoping. So I can promise you, Scott won't talk, if you only got ninety-three calls, but I can guarantee it, I can get a hundred and ninety-three calls just by knocking on doors today, because a lot of people just don't complain. They take a lot of pain before they complain, but if you hit them with a double bill, that, I, I can guarantee it, you're, you're pushing people too far, and you're gonna push them to the point where I, months ago, I heard a guy tell me a story. Before this even got as bad as it was, he, for two years, he'd been getting a two-hundred dollar a month bill, and he can't fix the problem. He's been bassing forth and back and forth, nobody can tell him what's wrong, it's a family of four. They don't water them on, so he said, I don't know what's going on, he said, but I talked to somebody else, and he's already having a lawsuit. And now, before this got to be as big as it is. So I can promise you, that tsunami is gonna include a few lawyers blowing on boats, collecting the fees to sue the city, they can't. There, there's just, you actually know doubt in my mind that that's coming, and you just choose how you wanna do this. The idea of rolling back at the same time that maybe laying that second bill, it's kind of an interesting problem, because all of a sudden, you're giving people a bone, looks like you're doing something. I mean, this isn't a problem of their making, it's your screw-up.
Right.
You're the one that's gonna, you're gonna, you, I, I can tell you, I, I was shocked, actually, and what I can't understand is this, why are there so many people in one neighborhood that all seem to have two-hundred dollar bills? I was presented by my wife, who's teach every single bill we ever had for dinner, at, at, about forty-six months of bills. I glanced through them real quickly, thirty-eight to eighty-nine dollars a month. Okay, one of them went up to a hundred and sixty in the last four years. I'm sure she can take me back to the first day we ever moved here, and I'm gonna chart this out. But we got a one-sixty-nine bill because they had a leaky meter, we had that fixed. It was really the city's problem, but I had to pay for it, but that's another story. I'm gonna argue about that one right now. But, uh, uh, in the last three months, two hundred, hundred, two hundred, what is going on? I mean, I, I, by the way, Cece, the meter reader, I tell you one thing. I called up two weeks ago, fifteen days ago, she came up the night day at eight-thirty. If you got a water meter, meter problem, it's not her. This woman, the way she, the speed with which she satisfied me, made me smile, in five minutes, I thought, wow, this is not the problem. I don't know what she's doing, but she's, whatever she did for me, she did right. She found my meter in minutes, told me exactly how to read it, and she was out of there in five minutes. But she was beautiful. So you got something going for you, and that's a hard-working person to make meter. If you got a, if you need another one, clone her, because this woman is really, really good. So, so I, I know what my, I went and read my meter that day, I read my meter again this afternoon, I know exactly what my consumption is, but I can't figure out, just my wife and I, how many guys am I getting these two-hundred dollar bills? It doesn't make sense. It's not going in my water system, something about it that is wrong. I know my meter was changed about three years ago, and, and I'm, I'm looking at bills that are triple what they're normally... And all I can tell you is this, if you do nothing more tonight, please, do not double bill, at least do not double bill and expect people to pay in thirty days. Split, give, put two bills in the same one, and people can understand that, two separate bills, two, two billing periods in the same bill. You'll mark it, one of them is payable now, the other is ninety days. You got taxes coming up on the twenty-second of December, city and county taxes coming up, she's got Christmas coming up. You're gonna, and I heard, I mean, I'm telling you the truth, this lady told me her friend does not know how to feed her kids if she has to pay that one or none, she doesn't want to lose them. I hope this is helpful, I thank you for listening to what I have to say, I'm just trying to give you this. I, I, I got a lot of info, and I'm gonna get a lot of admiral from people, the residents, and they're really, really hot. A lot of people take a lot of heat before the squeal. They haven't started the squeal yet, because that number's gonna go up real big. And you double bill them, double, like that, and you won't collect those bills. These people are gonna stop paying their bills. Some of them can't. They're gonna shut off the water, they're gonna have a family without water, I don't think so. But that's your problem. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. There was, uh, we had had some discussion one time about that double bill and everything. Now, is there a reason that we can't do what he had asked? Was it because of a middle reading or something? Or can we actually send those two bills out in one envelope? One, I guess I asked Wanda, I'm sorry, I...
Cycle one bills, we have to read. Cycle two bills, we don't have the middle read for the end of the month, because we decided to do the two months together. So we were gonna read them today, but since I have reset in the machine, I'll read them tomorrow.
Okay, so...
So we don't have a read for cycle two. We don't have two...
So the reader didn't actually read the second read?
That's correct. The ending read for the previous one.
Okay. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, there is a possibility, if the mayor and council wants to consider it, uh, we could estimate a one-month usage for the cycle two. Now, what we're talking about is, we would be giving them an average consumption in order to produce a one-month bill. And then take the current reads, which we go from that, estimate in usage, and produce another one-month bill if you wanted to go that route.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? What, what? Come on, come on up again, uh...
So what I'm talking about, actually, we had prepared this before, but, uh, after consultation, uh, decided not to use it. Uh, because the reads were skipped in cycle two on that one particular month, or one particular period, we have a program that's, uh, that's prepared, uh, that'll estimate. In other words, if your average usage over a period of time, I think we used the last twelve months, if your average usage for the past twelve months is one thousand gallons, and your last true reading was, let's say, five thousand gallons, uh, five thousand gallons of read, then we would estimate that and make the new pre, new ending read for that one-month period, six thousand, so maybe a thousand. And then on the second bill, because we are two months behind on that one cycle, then the second month would take the true read that is now and measure it against the previous read that we have estimated at six thousand. So let's say that your current read at this moment is seventy-five hundred. Then it would compute the usage from seventy-five hundred back to six thousand, and bill you for fifty-eight hundred. That is a possibility. And that doesn't mean that that is estimated read.
Right.
It'll get two bills, two separate bills. And we can put a extended period, that'll take ninety days, forty-five days or whatever. We can put that. So that's very possible.
Estimating, uh, bill and level and, uh, it's gonna end up, they're gonna pay the correct amount for that period, but all it's gonna do is show two bills. And that's all it's gonna do.
You still got problems?
Well, that's part of it, but estimating, I don't, uh, you know, I don't like that. I'd, I'd rather we postpone billing and straighten it out, and, 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 again, like somebody else said, the, uh, city over a period of years has, has messed this up and has come to light. And I don't think we need to inconvenience or confuse the taxpayers anymore than we've done. I think if we need to stop all billing until we get it straight, we need to do, I don't like estimating, nothing.
No, I don't like estimating.
The only other way to do that and catch up would, would be to send the one bill for two months, right?
Now, quite frankly, in the previous discussion, just as Mr. Bryan had expressed, we're dealing with something that's not truly real, estimating.
Sure.
We're not, it's not, and it's many factors, it's many...
The end result is real after that second read.
Yes.
When you move between the two, nobody's gonna pay any more or any less than they would have after your time.
This is, if we, if we have a true read and a true read, even if it covers a two-month period of time, those are true. That is true consumption. There's no estimation, there's no mathematical formula that we came up with to arrive at a middle point there. And I, and I agree, and that was the, that was the, the wisdom that was used before, and I, and I think was just wisdom in doing so. Now, you know, expecting that in one-month period of time or normal due date, I mean, that's truly up to y'all, but would seem likely that that could be extended or, or worked out or paid half or something like that. That, that's up to y'all, but that's in y'all's book.
Very soon.
The, the situation, if we went with this, we will then have a cutoff date that from that point on, everything's be okay. If we stay with what we're currently doing, we're pushing it further down, because we can't get that. That's the reason we're doing double cycle.
Yeah.
So this will stop that process. It will lift the consumers, see, okay, here's two bills, I've gotta pay one, and here's another one, and then we'll have a fresh start. If we don't do that, we aren't gonna solve the problem, we're gonna continue rolling it over.
We have to unplug the rolling ball.
Yeah, that's it. So I say, uh, I, I don't want to say because it won't get safer or anything. But I say, let's do that, that stops rolling ball, it gets...
We don't stop it.
We catch up, we catch up, okay, it's been rolling.
Right.
Yeah. And that's the only way we're gonna get back up.
Well, by the only way, what, what you're saying there, the only way is not just by estimating.
Estimate.
So, but, you're still gonna get to the same place in the same amount of time, whether you estimate or not. But if estimating cuts that bill in half, the first one, and, and there's two in the same envelope, I'm assuming, will they both have the same due date?
I don't, I wouldn't think so. That's what he said, same.
Oh, you, you wouldn't think so?
You don't have it, yeah, forty-five days, but the thing is, if you bill and do what we're currently doing, I don't want you to skip the can, but we are, we don't have, we don't have a cutoff point. So this can take care of the cutoff point and start with this. So I say, true bill, estimate bill, double bill, it's two bills with two different due dates, and then the next cycle, we should be on track.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We're talking about ninety days of billing. The ninety days of billing will come in two months filled together, which we've already six cycles, so we're gonna have to do that one way or the other. Then we're gonna go to thirty-day cycle, and we're gonna do that. Anyway, do it, you're still doing ninety days in sixty. And until you catch up, you're not caught up, and however you wanna make adjustments for how people are paying, and those quantities happens, that's an adjustment that you need to make, but you can't... But, you cannot expect people to pay ninety days in sixty days when all of a sudden, not everybody pays attention to their funds the way they need to.
Sure.
And they, they had a gimmick, so they didn't have a bill. Well, there's no gimmick in the bill. They gotta catch up with it. So, figure out how you wanna pay your ninety days period. But, the understanding is, is for ninety days, and it's due, and however you break it down, but you need to get the two thirties taken care of. And if you wanna get that under thirty and extend it or claw somehow, and, and I don't know how complicated that is, but you've got to make it in an understandable way because people aren't gonna get it. The first thing they're gonna see is the, the, the big number. And they're not gonna go from there and have a good understanding. It's like, uh, I, I sat down with, uh, our, our property manager and, uh, a, a member of our board and the mayor, and the, uh, city manager over in the water bill where we live. We have a master meter for eighty-four units. It turns out that that master meter was billing us at a level one, and it should've been billing us at a level ten. Now, that's a big difference in what your bills are gonna be. I can understand that there's an error, and I know that it needs to be corrected. But, I'm also gonna have to go back and tell the residents where I live, who are mostly one to a home, occasionally two, that they're gonna have a significant bill increase that's gonna have to come into our monthly fees because of the lack of continuity and figuring out how to get it right in the first place. And I, you know, and I'm not being ungrateful. The city has been good about listening to our concerns and working with us. We're not asking for something for nothing. But, you're not gonna explain to most people that they owe ninety, ninety days in sixty and haven't accepted, even though they've had thirty days, they might not have paid, especially when you're going at the rates you're going now.
Would it not make it, would it might not make it easier if you do the ninety days, if before you do that, you announced that there will be a, there'll be a rollback on the, uh, rate? In other words, it's kind of, uh, give them something.
I, I agree, we need to, we need to really strongly consider that rollback. We need a little more information to figure out how much that could be.
Yeah.
But, I agree, we need to, we definitely need to do that.
Mr. Mayor, John, I realize our appearance is to give us your opinion. And you stated it, and you recommended the estimate, and let's, here, you're the expert. Just forget us out of the problem, this is what we need to do. And that's why I'm asking you to give us.
Okay, firstly, you gotta understand what an expert is.
I wanna address, we're solving the same problem. We gotta get caught up on the double time, the air statement. There are two ways, there are two paths to get that sorted. One is the bill, one is estimate, estimate reads, so we get two bills.
Ooh.
There are pros and cons of each, and we can discuss those. I don't know if we can discuss them this form or not. Either way, it's gotta get some people caught up. So, from a family standpoint, I'm gonna step over here and be a citizen for a second. If I didn't get a bill from June, and now I'm gonna get July and August all on one month sum, here, I'm gonna get June, July, and August all on one side. I didn't save a hundred, a hundred dollars, I didn't pay there. I've got a problem, but some of that problem's self-inflicted and stuff like that, so... Yeah, I feel for that, I really do, and I know a lot of compassion on that, but the problem is, get caught up. Some of us, you gotta get caught up, is that fair?
That's fair, that is, that's...
Yeah, two different paths to get caught up. Different ways to get caught up, so I'll, I'll let him go there, sorry.
Well, and, and it, it's, it's just the difference in the approach, but Ellen's exactly correct, that the goal is we've got to get caught up in billing, so that we're caught up with that rolling ball once again. And however we do that, whether we estimate a one-month's usage there, and maybe in the same envelope, have the one that has it from the estimate read up to the current, and have different due dates on them, so that one is due in thirty days and one is due in sixty days, or however, I mean, that's, I mean, that's totally up to y'all. That's not, no...
But, if you did, if you did it that way, then you're, you're catching up.
Yes.
It takes longer. If you have different, different due dates on the actual bills.
Actually, you're, yeah, actually, you're billing up to date. You're just giving extended periods to pay.
Wow, okay.
That's what I'm, that's what I refer to. Now, the other way, is where you go from actual, and actual, if it covers a two-month period, you could accomplish the same thing by just giving an extended period there or a chance to pay half of it down and half of it in another, you know, another...
But, at the same time, you're gonna be getting another bill.
That's different.
At that point. So, it doesn't do any good. So, the estimate, if one is gonna do the best for the citizens, because it will give them those two bills, and then pay it on the thirty or forty-five, and whatever it is.
The other thing you wanna be aware, and, and I'm not, I don't know, some cities have rate tables. For example, first thousand, you get tens of the gallon. Back to that, the center of the region, between two and three thousand, you're fifteen cents a gallon. So, for double bill, it's gonna calculate on that extended consumption, those two things. So, it could elevate those bills, but something you need to be aware of, as I said, the goal is, and it's your choice, it's your choice how you wanna handle it. The goal is to get caught up at some point. How we get there is pros and cons each one.
Right.
There may be a third way, creative solution. Just take the gimmick. Just eat it, write it off, skip a month of revenue. We're talking about all this additional revenue we have coming in anyway, because elimination of the trunk cavity, we've got the thirty percent increase we just did, and we're talking about rolling back. Why not consider just give the citizens a month? Give them a month to pray more, and that starts.
Well, what about figuring out their high rates, too? Solving that problem, all the way?
Oh, that's, that's part of it. I'm, I'm talking about the...
I mean, that's two in a month.
... on the floor at the moment, yes, ma'am.
True.
Council Brian, I agree, if you, if you wanna choose that option, that's up to y'all. Really make sure, uh... My opinion is, uh, this is my opinion, you know, right now, you have two cycles. You, the, the discussion, I wonder what's the double bill or estimate bill? There's four cycles for the city, so you gotta figure out, okay, how are we gonna handle all four cycles for all citizens, all businesses, all everybody? Is that apparent, so make sure that those other two cycles, huh?
Yes, I understand. I, I, I would think we would, would have to just select a, a, a month.
If that's your thoughts, yes.
And, and just absolutely give the, the people who have not paid, they don't have to pay. The people that have already paid, give credit. But, but just, just wipe a month. And, and we're talking about a thirty percent rollback in the rate. So, that's, that's a, a couple of months' worth of revenue. If I'm doing my math right, so, so why, why not just consider just, just wipe, wipe through the past all? And we, we work out the, the logistics of either crediting people who have already paid or not charging the ones that have.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brennan, have a hand up back there.
Oh, gee, I've got, I've got a question, it's kinda bothering me. You're talking about double billing, you're talking about single billing, skipping billing, all this. And this gentleman said earlier that you were this close to having this thing correct. Is this thing correct now? Is it gonna be able to bill correctly? Or, next month, are you gonna come back in here with the same meeting saying, "We still this far away, and we still billed wrong, and we still read wrong, and we're gonna do all this over again"? How far are we away from actually getting absolutely correct before you go off and bill?
Yeah, figuring out if they got scale problems or whatever.
You're gonna be talking double billing for six months if you never get it right. If you, if it's never done right. I mean, I don't know, I don't know that much about the utility business as far as, uh, water, uh, sewage or anything, but, like I said, I've worked for a billing company, and until we got something right, we didn't put anything out. People were paying, and, and the telephone industry, people paid the same rate before, uh, uh, after the PSC gave us a new rate chart, they paid the same rate until we got the rate right. And then, we started billing for the rate. We didn't go back and double bill, triple bill, or any other kind of bill, we ate it. If we couldn't correct it, we ate it. And I just wanna find out, when is this gonna be right? Are you gonna be back here in three weeks, four weeks, doing the same thing?
There's obviously problems if people's bills are three and four and six hundred dollars. I think that, I would suggest that you get a group of people to address that right away. And you know who a lot of those people are. And ours doubled, yours doubled. Really take a look and see, why did that really happen? Maybe we have input the wrong information into this system when it was turned on. And otherwise, you're gonna still have them come in here and beaten Wanda's office down, you know, because people can't understand, and you can't explain, and she can't explain what's wrong. Unless you chase that rabbit until you kill it.
John? I like both ideas, to, well, to give us all a free month, but that's an interesting problem. Me personally, what are you gonna take, a thirty-nine dollar bill or two-hundred dollar bill? Bill seems to go up and down like this with no explanation.
That's my point.
And I've got big neighbors that have twelve-hundred dollar bills, nine-fifty, six-hundreds, two, four-hundreds. Which one are you gonna pick? The only way you can really ever do that is to do a percentage or something over a period of time, because these bills in the last three or four months have gone so far out of whack. Billy, you, you create an absolute nightmare for the, uh, for the water department, trying to figure out. My wife tells me that the way we're paying the bill, we're gonna lead the way, our next bill might be zero, or it might be a credit. So, I would give nothing. You know, it, so there's no fair way to administer it when the bills are so crazy right now. And I just have one thought, that if you're thinking of mailing a double bill out between now and the next week, since that ball is going and you wanna catch up to it, maybe it'd be smart to wait until after the next work session, a week from today. And if there could be a vote in that work session regarding, uh, rescinding the rate increase, or you'd have more time to think about it, or you'd just discuss it and decide what to do, then you could implement it in the bills, rather than have Wanda sending out bills and you guys turn around the next day and, and change something that would've made palatable. Somebody gets a four or five-hundred dollar bill and say, "We're gonna, we're, we've implemented a rate decision." Wow, that's good. You know, so all of a sudden, that rate, that big bill that it got, or those big outstanding water bills becomes a little bit more palatable. And I, I, I think that that's something you might wanna think about, 'cause I really think, you're gonna hit somebody that's on the ropes with a, with a knockout blow with a huge bill, because they're so out of whack. I, I'm seeing something very different in our neighborhood, I don't know why. But, I can't tell you the number of people that say two-hundred. It seems like everybody's meter goes to two-hundred. What, what does that mean? You know, I don't know, maybe, maybe they all got rented two-hundred, I have no clue. In fact, somebody was so, told me that in one little cul-de-sac, they averaged the bill. So, everybody got the average. I wouldn't wanna live near the guy that got the twelve-hundred dollar bill. You know what I'm saying? Because there, there was no meter read, it was just an average of the bill in that neighborhood. So, I have no idea if that's true or not, but that's what that person was told. So, you just have to be real careful, and you might wanna think about sending out the bill bill until you've made administrative decisions, including today. Jack?
We solved the problem.
I just wanna say, I, I appreciate everybody that's gotten up and spoken, because, you know, whether you have a hundred-dollar bill or a three-hundred-dollar bill, it's all relative to what you've outbudgeted for that. And there's no way you can budget for this. You know, it's, it's unfortunate, and it's been up and down, and up and down. And you're, John is right, you know, we, we have to do this thing down the road. Everybody wants a solution to it. These gentlemen are here, they've been here a couple of weekends, uh, trying to work on this and try to get a solution. My way of thinking is very simple. I always try to make it the easiest way that I can. And, and I mentioned this to Mr. Wood before, and I'm gonna bring it out again, in that, especially now that we know that we are billions of people that have not billed before, you know, five-hundred something customers, that's a, that's a good bit of income. So, had we have known that, would we have had to raise rates? Nobody knows yet, but I'm sure we will know soon. And I believe you guys are getting close to, to seeing the answer. But, in my way of thinking, is kind of the KISS method, keep it simple, stupid. That's, that's what I, I would kind of try to do, is just make it the easiest way I can. And it seems, the most fair way to me is to go back to, and it'll be a small number of customers that won't fit this model, we're gonna have to figure out something else. Go back to before we did the rate increase. And see what those bills average. And just take that for a couple of months, and let people pay that amount until the first of the year. Give us time, or whatever, if it's, if it's two weeks, if it's three weeks, whatever. But, let us continue to have an amount. No double billing, you know, that's not right to, to you all. We the ones that, that caused this, you know, we, I think we, getting our extra amount, we should be able to absorb it. We will be able to make it fair for everybody, but at least you would pay a normal amount. You know, some extraordinary amount, where we don't know it's right, you don't know it's right. You know, that's, that's my suggestion. I just, just throw that out.
Hey, I'm not, if, just one last comment here, and I promise I'll, I'll shut it up. I, I know, John, you've made some very dramatic examples here, twelve-hundred dollar bills, nine-hundred dollar bills, things like that. The, the people in charge of our program are working diligently on it. I, I, I'm still stunned that the number of complaints we've received is only ninety-some-odd complaints out of eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-something customers. If I get a twelve-hundred dollar water bill, I'm gonna complain. I just, uh, one is too many, don't get me wrong, I'm not downplaying the problem. But, I want everybody to remember, it, it's, there's eighty-two-hundred customers. I still wonder how widespread it is when we've got less than one hundred plates. Now, I'm not happy with my rate increase either, but it's, again, everything possible is going to be done. Nobody's sitting around just waiting on somebody else to do something. It's going to be done. If it comes down to it, if, if, if we're satisfied that N Code can't do the jobs, we'll replace them with a different company while the ball's rolling. That's all we can do. I think they're doing all that can be done now. It's going to be solved. We're not going to cut people's water bill off. Single moms that owe four-hundred, fifty dollars on a questionable bill, John, that's not going to happen. It's not gonna happen. Right, Scott?
Hope not. Right. I, I'm not aware of those particular cases, but certainly they will, uh, you know, they'll, they'll present whatever their information is. We need to, we'll take, we're in the process now, try and keep that register active.
But, they have to talk to us. They have to say something to us, and not just stand by and let it just pile up. Eight-hundred here, nine-hundred here, twelve-hundred here. Somebody's gotta tell us something, and we'll, we'll, we'll help them. We all know this is screwed up, and everybody's doing everything they can, and no poor person that can't afford, that, that should have a thirty-dollar bill and they're getting a nine-hundred-dollar bill, they're not going to get their water cut off. We will not let that happen. Thanks.
Carol, do you have something?
I have something I wanna say. I appreciate you hearing us from the floor, that's real helpful in business work study. That makes a big difference in that concept. What I will say is, I appreciate the council members and everybody present and, and, uh, anybody that's excluded themselves, me tonight, and themselves, and the community of this service. I think we're working hard to work it out. I think we've had opportunities before now to make that information known. I think it's taken us getting to an election in order to get people to start working apparently together. And I, I personally do not, I am disappointed. A work study is a work study, and you study it and you work it out, and you talk about it. If someone makes a motion, I don't care who makes that motion. It's a motion for discussion, it's not a motion for a vote. Discuss it. You do us all a disservice by not discussing it. And I don't, I come often enough, and I pay close enough attention to what's going on. I don't pretend to be a councilperson, but I have become better informed the more I have become involved and listened. I don't always hear or read in the newspaper what I hear in council cha, in, in chambers here. I don't always hear or read in newspapers what I hear in council, in, in chambers here. I do not always see it portrayed as it has happened. That disappoints me. But that's not mine. If any member of the council or anything else has an opinion that they wish to share, share it not as an opinion, as a matter of public print, but a matter of the editor's page, or that's a forum for that. It's not fair to the public, they don't have that on the information, most of them don't get out to the meetings, some with good reason, and a lot without. But, there is a time to research and be consistent, and it has been long before this issue came up, and it has been earlier, when this issue has been before you. Let me try to clear out my thoughts. I have respected each person on this council. I have become sorely disappointed in many people because of this election. And I have made my decisions not based on any one candidate or any one person sitting here. I make my own decisions, ask my husband. But I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak, and I would relish that we go forward from here, not only addressing the water situation, the utility situation, but the working for the cohesive good of the community versus having factions within the deciding body. It's not a matter of power, it's not a matter of persons, it's a matter of doing what's right for the public, and it makes you look good. Things that have happened in the last few weeks have not made several people here look good. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, John, and you'll be the last one. Anybody else?
Just, just one quick comment, uh...
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Paulson. I just wanted to comment to you, Bill, I appreciate your comments. I, you know, we're here at eight-twenty on Thursday evening, it's not a normal meeting night, and so I don't think there's a person in this room that doesn't feel that we all want the best interests of the city it can. And I think that's another question. I think we're all trying real hard, and it's frustrating, because I pay water bills, and you all pay water bills, and you see the same problems. And I was just trying to relay to you, Bill, the fact that these are people, I'm not just soliciting people's comments on the water bills, I'm just listening to people tell me, 'cause it's immediate. You know, if they know you're involved somehow in the election process, immediately they start talking about the, uh, the water bills, and, and I'm just listening. And all I can tell you is this, I'm just trying to tell you that we've got a chance to solve the problem. And all, I, I feel strongly that the ninety-three, maybe the nine-hundred fifty, twelve-hundred, two of those ninety-three, I don't know, I, I really feel it's very underreported, 'cause I, as I mentioned to you, Scott, the people take a lot of pain before they squeal. And I really feel, in, in that same vein, you gotta look at, when you double billing, the squeal's gonna come out, and you gotta be real careful. I mean, I think we're just borderline, if, if you had a mindset in Washington, I think you'd really find out how big the problem is. A lot of people, honestly, don't have time to come down here and complain. It takes time, takes a couple hours. Your husband works, your wife works, your wife's taking care of the kids, she's got soccer, football, everything. Bingo, they don't have time to come down here and spend that kind of thing. And honestly, I, I wish Wanda was here, 'cause I complimented the water department, but unfortunately, I hear a lot of people tell me that they get just pushed aside and say, "The water bill went up forty percent, pay the bill, you don't have a choice." And so, that's unfortunate, but I'm hearing those kind of comments, and I'm just trying to relay, it's unusual, I collect so many comments in a very short period of time, but they're all meant to be shared with you, so you can decide what to do with them. But thank you, Bill, I appreciate that, which is, uh, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Of course, they don't leave anybody out. I don't believe we have, actually, too much. So, I, I think it's been a good discussion, I think, you know, if we have to meet every week until this is resolved, we need to do so. Uh, and so, I think that, uh, this has been very productive tonight, as far as I'm concerned, and I'd like to thank our, our gentlemen, Tom and Technologist there to, for, for being here, for coming out and being here, and, uh, helping us get this resolved, and it's, it's gotta be as quickly as possible, so...
Do we have any action that we're gonna take from this point forward?
Exactly, exactly.
The action would be, uh, soon be coming in our next meeting, once we get an indication of... I've got, I've got this, the only hesitation I had about the complete rollback on the bill was that, uh, for three months, we're about almost seven-hundred thousand dollars down in revenue from what we were last year, which is pretty substantial. And it makes you wonder, why is that? And I think it has to do with the, the billing cycles and stuff like that, some of this has, has maybe shifted later in the year than what, uh, what we know. But I think, and hope that as soon as we can, and maybe by next week, if we can get some good indication there of, of what, uh, revenues are gonna be generated here, just simply by the, um, rollback and the addition of those five-hundred something parcels that are, had been paid.
Maybe that question should go to Scott. Is there gonna be any action from your organization?
I just understood your question, I guess.
Yeah, well, maybe I put places to the wrong place, from Scott, from ENCODE, is there anything that's gonna happen between now and the next meeting?
Yes, but there's something happening every minute of every day.
Thank you. Are you going to send out the double bill?
That's, that's up to council, I think that's an open question. When are those to go out? I'm sorry, I'm...
It's, it's, this next week, I think.
I think you were planning on sending them before the next meeting, which is, that's right. Maybe, maybe, uh, we do.
Well, if, if they're planning on going out at the next meeting, I don't think we should double bill, so I'm gonna make a motion if we're not doing that, and I'm gonna bring a bill on Wednesday.
I would second the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna have to understand exactly what that is. If we don't double bill in one bill, are you, do you consider a estimated one halfway in that?
One must credit. So that they don't get double billed, they don't get double billed. Isn't that what you were suggesting, Neil? I truly agree with him.
Well, I think what I was suggesting is gonna take a little more work and research than, than just right now, just say, pick a certain month and, and skip it. I think we, we do need to do some averaging, some fair method of, of just...
So you're saying...
As somebody out there said, when we make a mistake, we just eat it. We've made a mistake, we've, we've gotten behind on our billing, we gotta eat that, we gotta figure out a way to do that.
Right, it's not decent as far...
But, but, but that's different than just not double billing, so...
I get, I guess the question here is, it looks like there is, no, there, in, in one of these cycles, obviously, I guess it's cycle four, we're gonna send out, we have a reading, and then skip the reading, and then another reading. So, how do we handle that? I mean, their, their suggestion originally was that we, they estimate based on previous average usages or something, and have an estimated bill, and then that final reading, you know, subtract the estimated bill from the final reading and, and send it out, uh, well, send it out together, I guess, but have to differ, in, uh, in a few days. So, you know, and that's, somehow or another, that's the only way to get called up unless, unless we are skipping payments or something.
That, that was my question. With the, the recommendation that you gentlemen made early on about what the, uh, through the one cycle billing and then the estimated, uh, billing, you said that, that would prevent the rolling stone, and then with the next billing, we should be called up? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to take that, uh, you're talking about the estimation, right?
I'm talking about the regular billing plus the estimation, you do an estimation, that should have us call up with our billing cycle.
Yes, it would, 'cause the actual reads that we're using to end now are the second period, those are the actual reads, so yes, it would catch us up.
Okay, and if that catches up, the, the other thing that you were recommending, that if you did, put two bills in one envelope, uh, we could look at extending, uh, the due date on one of the, on, on one of the bills. Uh, I'm not sure what, what, what is the due date, Mr. Wood? Can you tell me how many days after the initial bill? Do you need confirmation of it? Okay.
Something on that, fifteen, I believe, I mean, that ballpark here, normally, when you get one...
We're trying to figure out something that we can do that will have the least amount of impact on our, our citizens, but we, we need to put a stop to the rolling stone in there once, at any day, and we need to get on a regular billing cycle. So, if, if it takes putting two in one with an extended due date, then I would favor that. If that's gonna stop this law from rolling any further, and we would be on a correct billing cycle.
If we do that, then our citizens could be able to make their payments, we have no late charges.
Well, we're not gonna talk about that, we're just trying to do this, it was best for our citizens.
Are you making that a motion, yes?
Okay, that's, thank you. Do you want to make a motion in that respect?
I hope I did this correct, you know, but I am thoroughly confused with all this stuff that's been thrown out here, and I can imagine how customers are. I make a motion that we do not include a double billing payment, I guess is what I'm saying, but we do do double, we do send out two bills, first bill to cover the, that cycle, and the second bill, an estimated billing with an extended due date of, uh, thirty to forty-five days, or however it can be worked out, in order to get us caught up and get us current with our billing as a fee.
Second?
Okay. And I have a question for the gentleman, if we do this, this is gonna get us up to date, uh, there should be, in the future, hopefully, the problems will be worked out, and we should be okay for the forward, to go forward, is this correct?
This is caught up with the ball.
Caught up with the ball.
Caught up with the rolling ball.
Okay, so, so our citizens are not gonna get any more supplies, is that correct?
It's a different question. We have, you have to recall the ball.
Okay, okay, I'll back in a minute.
We have a, a motion and a second, uh, that we actually send out two bills. Now, is this just cycle four, or is this other cycles, or any of them?
Cycle two.
Two cycle two, only?
Two cycles.
Two cycles?
I was wondering, two cycles. What I, it's a, it's one and two.
They've been caught up, closer to being caught up. Uh, cycles one and two, is that what it is?
Let's, let's make it this way. Whatever cycle needs it, on her Ms. Patterson's motion.
I just kinda wonder how many people are gonna be calling, you know, if it's one cycle worth, two cycle worth, all of them.
Can I have a question on that, Bill? Okay, we're getting, getting a double bill, second one, we pay forty-five days later, which will coincide about with the next regular bill that we're getting, which I still won't be able to pay. I mean, it's still, it doesn't make sense.
When you get, yeah, absolutely, it's like you, if you extend the due date on, on that one of those bills, this wanna overlap into the time of the other one.
But you've had a holiday, because we haven't had bills for a whole month, so this, there's, there's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion, and so, any other, any other comments or questions here, under the council?
Did I hear the word, estimated, the motion?
Yes, you did.
You did, sir. No, you don't like that, but that's, that's what they're saying is the best way to do it.
Only way to do it and get two bills in the envelope is, is do an estimate on the other, otherwise it's in one bill, that covers a two-month, or a two-cycle period. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion or questions? If Don knows a favor, signify the saying, aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
All members voted for the motion, with the exception of Ms. Bryant, voted no.
What do you want to do about the first motion on the floor?
Uh, she would do it, I'm sorry, she would do that motion. John?
Just may I, one question maybe directly at Scott. Scott, when we catch up to the ball and get the double bills in the one envelope, won't you have a pretty good idea of revenues in terms of receivables? If, if we collected them all, dream, dream comes true, and all of the receivables, and then wouldn't you be able to come back to council and say, "Look, we're, uh, two-hundred to three-hundred thousand dollars over, over our projected revenues at this point, and here's what it looks like it's gonna be for the next six months"? Maybe now they can make more educated decisions on whether or not to rescind, roll back, or do whatever to the previously imposed price increase. And you're gonna have a revenue number in a receivable for all those bills you're sending out, it should be a number that you can get, right?
Yes, sir.
Won't that help council make the educated decision on where they are in terms of rolling back, or deciding revenues?
Yes, sir.
So, so, you know, it's kind of, uh, maybe, maybe when you get that bill out, come back to council at the next, can you do it by the next work session, if they do send that bill out this week?
We, we will do our best, I may have to defer to our good CFO behind you, but we will certainly do our best.
Well, I'm just thinking, it's, it's a, it's a tool for your decision-making, and I think it would be a pretty powerful tool as to what to, you're not flying blind anymore, you got a pretty good handle on, we know where we are, God willing, we'll collect all this money, and, and then we know where we are, or you could, you know, you know kind of what fudge trash you're even, you're not gonna fly, and bang, a couple seven days, you make a decision.
I think it would show us where we are to that point in the year.
Much better than today.
No question. Well, if that's a representative indication, I'm pretty, we would finish the year, I can't say, but I think it would show you where you are today.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. This all comes ahead, I think there was five large users for water that were being majorly underbilled. Just taking those five is gonna be a big number. So I think we're looking at that as a positive, and just looking at those numbers, we should be moving ahead.
Okay, I'm hopeful that's what we'll find, I'm, I'm totally convinced, and I'm hopeful that it's what we're gonna find there. Anyway, let me, let me say, I wanna thank everyone of you for being here tonight and, and participating here, and, uh, I mean, I think it's been very, very, so I wanna thank the council for the time they spent in this special meeting here, because I do think it's been beneficial to us, we've, we've, I've learned some things myself, uh, and yet, the, the, the challenge is nowhere near over just yet. But I think, I think that we're, we're making some progress, and it's maybe kind of, you know, kind of like eating a cucumber, you know, it's gonna be kind of slow chewing, in the way, and some of the problem, I'd like to see us be able to, uh, to get done as quick as possible, and that, that, that's certainly gonna be our goal, so... I will entertain a motion to adjourn, unless someone has other bills.
Motion.
Yes, sir. Motion, second, those are favors, signify the saying, aye?
Aye.